Hope everyone had a little bit of outdoor activity this past weekend. It was beautiful outside. We'll start with a moment of personal reflection. Thank you. Madam Clerk, National En. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of Mohawk people of Akasasne. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councillor Bernadette Kimmern. Mayor Bernadette Kimmern.
Present.
It's a rough way to start the meeting, my apologies, Madam Mayor. Councillors Claude McIntosh.
Present.
Edith Bajeron.
Present.
Dave Gardner.
Here.
Dean Hollingsworth. So we are waiting for Councillor Hollingsworth to join us. Councillors Caroline Ebbard.
Present.
Glenn Grant.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
Justin Towndale.
Present.
Elaine McDonald.
Present.
We are also waiting for our councillor, Mariste Pead, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any additions, deletions, or amendments? Councillor Bajeron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I pull consent item number 10, please?
Thank you. Any other amendments? Councillor Towndale? Oh, you're muted. Still muted.
Okay, let's try this again. I do apologize. Can I pull consent item number 9, please?
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, may we move communication item 1, the architectural design of new fire station, to be dealt with immediately following the presentation on the same subject matter?
Yes, council is okay with that. Sounds good, Madam Clerk. Anybody else? Okay, we need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Councillor Grant and Councillor McDonald, any further discussion? All in favor? Carried. Any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, we need a motion to go into committee of the whole. Councillor Gardner, Councillor Ebbard, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. We have minutes for the meeting of May 10, 2021. Need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Towndale and Councillor Grant. Any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Madam Clerk.
The first presentation that we have this evening is from Via Rail. Mr. Cannon is joining us. Mr. Cannon, can you turn your video on, please?
Bonjour, Mr. Cannon.
Bonjour, bonjour.
Welcome to council.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. For having not me, but somebody from Via Rail. Thank you very much.
Yes, no, we're glad, we're glad to see you and to hear from you, and we'll have questions for you as well.
Um, thank you. So you, I can cast my present.
Well, I've shared the controls, Mr. Cannon, so you may share your screen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before Mr. Cannon starts, Madam Clerk, I have a text from Councillor Hollingsworth saying he's waiting to be let in. And I think Councillor Dupell had the same issue.
Let everybody in that is on the waiting list.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councillor.
Can you send me the link too? I can't find it.
Oh.
I can send you the link, councillor.
Thanks.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'll leave that to you, and welcome. I'll turn to Mr. Cannon to begin his presentation.
Thank you very much. So, given I'm casting, I don't see you, so if I know how you want to proceed, do you want to go ahead with the questions as we go along, or would you rather wait at the end, or I leave it up to you?
You can go ahead with your presentation. I'm sure council will be okay to ask questions at the end, if that's okay with council. I see heads nodding with consensus, so Mr. Cannon, you can go ahead, and then we'll question at the end.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, again, thank you for having me. I thought I should start by maybe giving you a quick reminder of who is Via Rail, so you have on your screens right now rail, I'd say, at a glance, in numbers. But we are the mandated operator by the Government of Canada to ensure national passenger rail service to different communities and regions, and we are.
Oh, okay, just a sec. Sorry, Mr. Cannon. Councillor Ebbard and Councillor Towndale, is there an issue?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we don't see the screen share. I think you were supposed to be sharing your screen.
Mr. Cannon, were you to be sharing your screen?
I am. No.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
I also have your presentation up on my screen, if you'd like me to share it for you, Mr. Cannon.
So, fine, I thought I was.
We can see it now.
I see it now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Well, thank you for letting me know. So. Okay. There's an awful lot of feedback there, sorry. So. I'm not sure what, okay. Lost my notes. Hang on. So if somebody was kind enough, said a second ago that could guess it for me, that'd be awesome, because I don't see my notes anymore, so.
Madam Clerk.
I would not have access to the notes, but I can show my.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine. So if you just flip through the slides, I can, that part I can.
Madam Clerk.
Yeah, I'm just.
Okay.
Here we go. Can you, can you see it?
We're seeing the front, the front page of the presentation.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And for those who wonder out there, I don't do technical support at Via, so rest assured, everybody. That's in safer hands than mine. So, as I said, you have the numbers up there of Via, at a glance, across the country. What we do is, as I've said previously, we operate for the Government of Canada, the rail passenger service to different regions and communities, and we offer a safe, accessible, efficient, reliable, environmentally friendly way to transport people. We did revisit a few months back our plan, or not our corporate plan, but, and through that exercise, we, I'd say we upgraded or revisited our mission, vision, and values. So, vision is a smarter way to move people, and later on, you'll understand why. I thought it was important for, just to remind it, because you'll see with the HFR and the other modernization projects that we have coming, that those are important at the heart of everything we do. The mission is to put the passengers first, and the values, actually, three of them go the extra mile, act today for a better tomorrow, and go further together. The, and, and you know that we, Via achieved in 2019, having a record-breaking year of 5 million passengers, surpassing the $400 million market revenue. And what's even more encouraging, as far as rail or Via Rail, yes, but rail transport in general, passenger rail transport, is those numbers followed a steady increase over the past five years, previously to that, of 32%. So, if you could go to the next slide. And the, I'd say at the heart of what we do, of course, there are different services we offer across eight provinces in the country, from Halifax to Vancouver. But at the heart of what we do is Ontario. And you have Ontario in numbers right here. So, more than 500 employees and for $350 million in revenues. And, and of course, it is important. Those are all 2019 numbers. We just released our 2020 numbers that you can find on the next page. So we actually moved from a little over 5, 5 million down to 1.1 million passengers at the height of the crisis back in April. We had, ridership had dropped 95%. I have to remember, because people, folks sometimes don't, don't remember that important part, but 2020 started off, after a couple of days, started off by the blockades affecting everything, all our services, almost all our services across the country. The rail blockades at the beginning of the year, and when those blockades were resolved, COVID hit, I think it was 10 days after that. So, the impact on the transport industry in general, whether it's air transport or just a cab driver, has been tremendous. And as far as we're concerned, it's a drop in ridership of 95%. You, for those of you who would like to look into our 2020 annual report, it is online right now. And if you'd like us to provide it, Mayor, we'd be very happy to do so. So you have on that slide the services that we do provide. So in Western Canada, the Canadian, actually back into service since May 17th, we, although we do not encourage necessarily long-haul travels. So we, we did open it. There is a difference between the way people used to travel. The Canadian used to be, well, not used to be, but is mainly a tourist experience. But the way people travel on Canadian right now is different. They, people do shorter hops. In the Atlantic, in the Maritimes, in the Atlantic provinces, services unfortunately have been suspended since March 2020. Our mandatory regional services, namely Winnipeg to Churchill and the other ones have returned, those have returned to three trips a week. But we do run other services out west in Ontario and in the province of Quebec. But the frequencies have gone down as well, although we do maintain those services for obvious reasons, because most of the time, there are no roads that lead to certain communities. If we could, and, and yeah, of course, with 95% of drop in ridership, as you may imagine, revenues dropped as well, and we had to do layoffs, unfortunate layoffs, last summer. Then hopefully, as vaccines ramp up, I was listening to somebody saying they had their shot a couple of days ago. Hopefully, a lot of people following that, in that footstep, and, and listen to regulations that are in place to stop the spread of the virus, and we can get back to normal, and then have our colleagues come back as the passengers come back and services ramp up. We could move to the next slide. Thank you. So the service in Cornwall, specifically, we have, I don't like when people read the slides to me, but, so we have over 56,000 passengers that transit through Cornwall. That was, of course, back in 2019. We, we all want to forget about 2020, or just take the few lessons that we can away from 2020. But it has been a difficult year. Station, as you know, is a, it is a non-staffed station that opens an hour prior to the train's arrival. It is accessible by wheelchair accessibility, universal accessibility. And there is a maintenance program in place, hence the well-groomed station. Bullet you see at the very bottom of that page, there is an ongoing maintenance program on the station in Cornwall. If we could move to the next slide. So, although we, as I said at the beginning of the presentation, we are mandated to provide rail service across the country to different communities. We, and, and our mandate is not to give out subsidies, but we do like to be involved in every community we go to. So we do our very humble contribution. Sorry. So, you have on here a few of the contributions we've given over the past few years. Of course, we always would like to do more, but we, yeah, we need to be able to sustain a number of communities across the services that we render across the country. And as I said, this is a humble contribution that we do to, to your community or the, and the communities around Cornwall. We have embarked, thank you. So we've embarked a few years ago on a very, very, I'd say, ambitious project to modernize, yes, Via Rail, but passenger rail as well. And so, HFR, HFR stands for High Frequency Rail. You've probably heard of it, or know of the HFR project, for which Via Rail is the proponent, and has been now for a couple of years. So, a few minutes ago, I told you that we had reached 5 million passengers in 2019. We do that by operating on only 3% of rails that belong to Via. The rest of the rails are the, belong to the CN or other railway companies. And so that leads to, we are, I'd say, saturated in the way we can help and transport people across our different, across the different communities we serve. So, with that in mind, this project was developed. High-frequency rail, you know, I'll let you in on a little secret. If we were anywhere else in Europe, this would only, this would probably just be called a train. But given we're here in, in Canada, we had to, yeah, it is a high-frequency rail. I guess to set it apart and, and kind of mark what we want to do. So the purpose behind high-frequency rail is to move from 3% of the track that we own to fully operating and owning the tracks we'd be running on. Only owning 3% of the tracks leads us to on-time performance issues. We have less of a control over the size of the consist, so the size of the trains. We have less control over departures, arrivals. We do need, and that's a good news for the Canadian economy, but more often than none, we do have to move aside to let pass freight trains that are getting longer and longer and longer. And therefore, that affects the on-time performance we have for getting the passengers to destination. So, all of that combined, we, Via Rail came up with a dedicated track that would not only continue to serve the communities we already serve, but better serve the communities we already serve, and add to our existing network. So, this will transform the way we do and approach serving different communities across, within the corridor between Quebec City and Toronto. Just to maybe give you a better understanding of that. Also, one thing that is very important, I almost forgot, I'm sorry. Two cities would be impacted in a different way. So those would be in Quebec, Drummondville, but, and in Ontario, Kingston. Those two cities that are already served by rail service that we provide would be transformed into hubs. In other words, what that means is trains would be sleeping overnight. We can then, for example, move around schedules and have trains leave from Kingston to Ottawa, or to Montreal, or to Toronto earlier in the morning. The reason I'm saying this is that the way train schedules are built right now, they are built to serve first and foremost the destination. So the destinations being Ottawa, Toronto, Montreal, as opposed to destinations, the communities amongst themselves. Reason I'm saying that is for somebody right now, who is in Cornwall and would like to go to Montreal, there's a 6:00 AM train that leaves Toronto. So by the time it gets to Cornwall and then into Montreal, the person, of course, gets to Cornwall around a quarter to 11, 11-ish in the morning, and then goes to Montreal. As opposed to when we would be operating HFR and having that hub in Kingston, we would then be able to have the same train leave the same time, but instead of leaving at 6:00 AM from Toronto, it would be leaving at 6:00 AM from Kingston. So it's not only the final destination that becomes the, I'd say, the first or tier-one market. It is every community along the way. So this project not only serves the bigger markets, but also serves communities among themselves. So, as you can imagine, having for access to train service on a more frequent, more reliable basis than what you have right now is at the heart of this, this very, very, very important project for not only rail passenger service across the country, but imagine the impacts on GHG emissions and the impact on GDP as we build and then are able to move folks from one community to another. And. I'm sure, I'm sure you'll have questions on that, so maybe I'll keep a little information for later. If we could move on to the next slide. So, today is May 25th, so I'll give you a scoop that normally, not that normally, but we do keep for our internal colleagues. So tomorrow internally, we will be unveiling the new fleet, the livery of the new fleet, the new colors. So this is a fleet that was, the Government of Canada actually invested close to $1 billion a few years ago, in order to get Via, be able, so we can be able to purchase new set of trains, 32 set of trains, actually. Those will be in operation in 2022. We expect delivery. We expect delivery, uh first deliveries of train uh coming in a few weeks slash months from now. Uh, and then to be able to run uh tests on them and have them come into service. The first ones will be. In twenty twenty-two. Those trains will be running in the corridor. So I was talking about H F R a minute ago. Uh, those are the trains for Via Rail's H F R project. Um, and uh. So they uh, they are bi-modal, so uh these uh. Trains will be able to run, of course, on diesel, but they will be able to run on electricity as well, and that's a. Uh, an important part of what we want to do with the H F R project. So moving forward with H F R on the next slide. Um, in the budget that was released by the federal government on April nineteenth. Uh, there were, uh, there was actually a mention of the rails over the next five years. Um, we would be getting uh four hundred ninety, close to five hundred million dollars. In order to be able to start the uh uh project. Um, and this is uh, we, we have been blessed with unprecedented. Um, I'd say support uh from different communities uh across. From Quebec City to Toronto. Um, some very important, very, very important um commitments as well. I can think of a week prior to budget when. The mayors of uh all four cities, Toronto, Ottawa, Montreal and Quebec City co-sign the letter that was published. Um, and the Ottawa Citizens and other La Presse and La Soleil and other uh. Uh, newspapers, online newspapers. We um also had a letter that was co-signed by the Ontario Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, sorry. And their uh Quebec counterparts, as well as the Toronto Board of Trade and the Montreal Board of Trade. Um, and in Quebec City, I'll give you an example. In Quebec City, uh, we uh, there was a a poll survey that was done. Uh, in uh, by the Chamber of Commerce to their members. Um, close to twenty-five-hundred members. And the H F R project scored uh number two at close to ninety-five percent uh. People being favorable to it and having it in their top priorities. Um, so it is a, it is a uh mammoth project that is uh crucial, uh important. Um, for everything I just told you about more. Um, and uh, it has strong support from. Different, uh, well, the two provincial ministers, uh, the governments. Uh, the, both the ministers of transport, all those I just named. And uh, that five hundred million dollar, although it may seem. Uh, out of a multi-billion dollar project, uh, very uh small. Um, you know, Minister Freeland publicly said that if we were to build faster, uh, then the money would be there faster. Um, Minister Champagne uh said something along the lines of, uh, yes, this is to uh move forward. Uh, I don't know of anybody who would give a a five hundred million dollar account on uh. Uh, deposit, sorry, on a project that they wouldn't want to buy. And uh. Minister Mossef said that that it was a uh significant step forward. Um, so we are very happy to see not only that kind of support from. Um, those uh economic stakeholders out there, uh, as well as uh, uh, but also from the federal government. Um. So. That uh. Con- concludes the uh. Little presentation I had for you and uh would be happy to take questions. And if I don't have answers, I will uh. Me and my colleagues will get back to you uh shortly with the with those.
Thank you. Um. I will start uh a speaker's list and we'll go forward. Thank you for um the presentation. I'll start by saying that. Um, we are happy for good news concerning Via Rail. Our concern, Mr. Cannon, of course, is for Cornwall and where we're going to fit into that brand plant. So the goal, of course, is not to be left out. That's always our, that's always our vision. So I saw uh councillor Burjol and councillor McDonald. Councillor Burjol.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You you kind of touched on it, except mine was in the form of a question. Uh, how does this benefit? The people of Cornwall, because that was, was part of the presentation, was it benefits. You know, everybody, but how does this specifically benefit the people of Cornwall? Will rail traffic decrease? Will? Options decrease, uh, increased? It it's really not clear.
Uh, well, as I said, options will increase um for passenger rail. We actually now are, we serve Cornwall through a um track that is not ours. Um, as I said, the H F R project is a project that is built uh to not only keep serving. The communities we already serve, but to serve additional communities. Um, so if I can concentrate my answer on uh your concern and 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 rightfully so, may I add. Um, it is the uh, the example of what I said earlier. Of course, train schedules are not. Done by now, it's still, um, we're still a few, unfortunately, we're still a few years away from that. Uh, but train schedule will, schedules, sorry. Uh, we will be able to have, uh, as the example I gave, instead of having. That morning train at six A M out of Toronto uh towards Montreal. And we would have a six A M out of Kingston towards Montreal. And so somebody who wants to catch a plane early in the morning. Uh, or or Montreal or Ottawa or whatever. Uh. So we would be, uh, Kingston would be transformed, uh, for the lack of a better term, into a hub. Um, and therefore we would be able to have trains that would sleep over in Kingston. And be able to move those uh options of uh. Of transit earlier in the morning or later, uh, get back later in the evening. So the whole concept of the trains as we run them by right now, um, at the moment we speak. Is that they are um services there to serve the um. Bigger markets uh and not necessarily communities among themselves. Um, and H F R is a shift in that paradigm uh in order to be able to have uh better service. Uh, in different communities and not just uh think of the endpoint.
Follow-up councillor.
It it would, just if I may, it would be uh very easy for me to tell you uh. To come here and and have a mapped-out schedule and everything. But unfortunately, as I said, we're years away from uh even seeing at first uh. Train run on those uh dedicated tracks and have H F R in place, so. Uh. The uh, but I can reassure you that the whole concept is very different than uh. Uh, the way we're going to operate is very different than the way we do it now.
Councillor Burjol.
Yeah, thank you. I don't, I don't know that I understand the direct benefit to the. People of Cornwall, but I'll listen to the rest of the questions and see if I have a follow-up.
Yep, that's fine. Councillor McDonald and then councillor Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'd like to begin, uh, Mr. Cannon, by telling you, I think you are probably the most courageous person who's ever appeared before our council. I thank you for coming to speak to us when everything you have to say is absolutely impalatable to us. This is a matter that goes to our economic lifeblood. Uh, you use slogans like your mandate is to um uh serve the people you're serving better. To bring enhancements and improvements. And all of those improvements are for others. They cut us out of the picture. And I just want to tell you that rail service or any kind of intercity service. For a mid-sized city like Cornwall is as important to us as a school is to a rural community. Without supports like this, it is very challenging for communities to uh, to survive and to thrive. So um, I I find it very ironic that um. Uh, you you review the changes uh in the improvements to our station house and you talk about the increase in passenger service. All the while, for us, we're being cut out. So I think you're a very courageous man. And I thank you for coming to speak to us, but your message is absolutely unacceptable. Um, you you know, I I don't think there's any comparison in uh traffic volume between the four seventeen and the four oh one. And literally what Via Rail is doing is going north, cutting out uh a s- a a pretty. Important city to us, the most important city from uh out of the uh, the corridor, the four oh one corridor. You're detouring around us. So this is uh going to be very challenging for us. And I have to tell you, um, I don't know how we can protest this, but. I I'm certainly going to speak to my M P and my M P P. Uh, as we have in the past, when we've suffered the loss of some of our bus service. Uh, more and more, um, it it in in, when you recount the great uh increases in your revenue. That you've made, my one thought would be, well, why can't you take less revenue and deliver better service? Especially since you are working on behalf of the government of Canada to provide national rail service. Which unfortunately cuts us out. So I don't believe these are your decisions. You are the spokesperson for these decisions. But um, I just have to say again, they're absolutely unacceptable and um. I don't think you answered my colleague's question about how this directly benefits us. Yes, so if we go to take a train, if we drive two hours to Kingston to get a train, it'll be on time, more than it is now. That is not a benefit to us. So um, thank you for coming and uh admire your courage. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Understood. The, did you want to respond, Mr. Cannon?
Of course I do. Um, well, um. Well, again, thank you for having me. So uh, but just, just to be clear, and I'll, I'll try to do this again. If a train leaves Toronto at six A M and is in your community by, let's say, eleven for conversation's sake. And to go and head to Montreal. Uh, you won't be in Montreal until the middle of the afternoon. If the same train, train leaves Kingston and goes through Cornwall. And then, so nobody's saying that you're going to have to drive for two and a half hours to Kingston. The only thing I'm saying is that scheduling will be in its essence different. Um, and those trains, instead of leaving the big markets. Will be, uh, the whole concept of the H F R project is to be able to serve communities. Uh, among themselves, and it's not just the big markets that count. So um. The train that uh would be leaving Kingston in the morning at six A M would, of course, uh, be in Cornwall. Earlier than it is if it left Toronto. Um, so uh, to answer uh the questions I had. Uh, those, well, in my opinion, and uh would be uh certainly beneficial that from that standpoint. Um, and the other thing is, you know, we uh. Uh. Our raison d'etre is to provide services uh where we can provide services. Again, Via Rail and I uh, I don't want to uh. You know, we operate three percent on three percent. We own three percent of the rail we operate on. Uh, in front of mammoths like uh other rail owners. Um, and to uh, and as I said, for the economy as a whole of the country. Uh, it is uh good news that, I mean, freight trains are getting bigger. Uh, that means the economy is looming. Uh, but at the same time, uh, we uh. And when I say we, it's not Via Rail as a corporation, uh, but it's uh Via in its essence and the passengers we serve. Uh, uh, have a uh increasing problem on on-time performance. And uh, therefore, having dedicated tracks to be able to have a better control. Uh, of what we do, the size of the trains, the consists, the uh. Uh, on-time performance, the schedules for uh arrival and departures. And so on and so forth, um, would certainly be uh beneficial for. Uh, everybody that will be along those tracks uh and be served by this new way of. Scheduling and these new uh services. Uh, is it, is uh everything ideal right now? I mean, if uh, we uh, yeah, the choice was given. Uh, I'd say Via Rail would want to be operating on its own tracks for decades now, but it's not the case. So. Uh, we have to be able to make the best of that, uh, and uh. Yeah, and that's why we came up with uh the High Frequency Rail Project. Uh. Hopefully, uh, it uh, it serves the greater good of all the communities we go to.
Councillor McDonald. You're muted. Did you want a follow-up?
It it, yes, I I would like to say it may well serve other communities better, but it certainly doesn't serve ours better. And even though we don't have to drive two and some hours to Kingston to get a train. We would have to drive at least a qu- an hour and a quarter to Ottawa to get a train. It would be simpler and faster to drive to Montreal and skip the train altogether. And unfortunately, that's not an option that everybody has. And I think that uh, in this era, when people are being encouraged to park their cars and use public, various forms of public transit. This is um, it's going against the current of the times. And uh, I know, as I said before, you're just a messenger, but this is a most unwelcome development. Thank you.
Councillor Gardner.
Uh, bonjour, Monsieur Cannon. Um, just to add to councillor McDonald's uh spiel. Will there be a reduction in service to Cornwall in a number of stops that they make now? And I have two other questions after that, Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Mister Cannon.
Cannon would answer that question.
Uh, so no, uh, there won't be any uh stop in services or uh, as I said.
Reductions. Reduction.
Reduction. And and as I said previously, the whole concept of this high-frequency rail project. Is to be able to give more services to different communities.
Thank you for that. Uh, my other issue is, uh, a few years ago, I was at an A M O conference and I. Met with Siemens International uh and the province of Ontario and the province of Quebec. We're looking at a. High-speed rail link between uh Quebec City and the Windsor corridor. Has that fallen off the table?
Mister Cannon.
Uh, you know, that's a good question. It'd probably be one for uh the uh. Um. Government of Canada. Um, as far as I know, uh, there uh, and there is a website, and I don't remember, I'm sorry, I would. Uh, I would give the uh name of the website, but as far as I'm concerned, uh, uh, there is a. I was going to say there is a website where there's, I I I want to say. A study on high-speed rail has been done since the end of the eighties. In approximately one every eighteen months. Um, none of these projects have gone through uh for a number of reasons.
Yeah.
And uh, you know.
I know it's one of those reasons.
I'm not, I'm not a uh fifteen or twenty-year rail. I'm not, I'm not a uh fifteen or twenty-year rail veteran expert. But when I first got to Via, I spoke with this gentleman that's based out of uh uh Nova Scotia. And I asked him, I said, you know, I in I hear a lot of people talk, people talk to me about high-speed rail. And he said, you know, uh, son, before you learn how to run, you have to walk. And before you get speed, you need frequency. And uh to people who will tell you high speed is better, well, tell them that if they don't live in Montreal or Toronto, uh chances are they won't uh ever uh hop on a high-speed uh train because uh in order for a high speed to be able to uh get its full speed, uh the lesser the stops, the better it is. And um so it would probably be running from point A to point B in a green field. And anyway, I got the uh uh five thousand feet, uh five thousand feet altitude uh uh course on high-speed rail, but um it is a very different project. Uh it'd be viable, I don't know, maybe, uh down the end of the road. But uh for now, we are the uh proponents of uh the High Frequency Rail, which uh as I said before, we'd be in Europe. And uh we would be talking about, we wouldn't, it wouldn't even have a fancy acronym. We'd be called.
Mister Cannon, I I don't
Counselor Gardner?
I don't want to cut you off because there are others that have questions. So you mentioned before that the trains could run uh on electricity. And if they run on electricity, you eliminate, of course, the the diesel fuel or whatever fuel they use. But also during that Siemens International meeting, uh they said that they could also, with magnetic brakes, if your uh trains are running on electricity, they use magnetic brakes, which gets rid of fuel in the brake lines that you don't need. So hopefully that will happen uh for the environment. And so thank you, and I'll pass the baton to somebody else, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for your time, Monsieur Cannon.
Thank you.
Counselor Mack, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I um I didn't realize the uh three percent issue with Via Rail. I knew there was an issue with the freight um supersedes passenger traffic on that corridor. Uh twice I became, I was a victim of that, if you wanna call it. Um once I waited an hour and a half in Bellville, I think it was an hour and a half, missed a connection to Toronto, Via arranged for buses, and off I went, well, five hours behind schedule because the freight came first. And uh I understand that now with three percent of the ownership, uh you're down at the bottom of the ladder when it comes to priorities. I guess the issue my colleagues were keen on, so the concern was, will the stops decrease in Cornwall because of this? And I think you answered that. I think you said not in the foreseeable future. Uh the same number of stops will continue in Cornwall?
I'm 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 sorry, the last.
We will have the same number of stops. Uh you, I think there's, say there's five stops now in twenty-four-hour period. Will that continue? Or will that be cut back?
Uh like I said, the schedule is not done. Um chances are it will not be cut back. Um but, yeah, as I said before, would be very easy, it would be easier for me to stand in front of you if we weren't a couple of years away from seeing even the first shovel uh uh for announcing this project. Um but uh, yeah, scheduled is not done. But the whole concept would be uh to a minimum, maintain uh the services that are uh on the table right now, if not enhance them.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Counselor Bennett?
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Um is it true that we have the only unstaffed secondary station between Montreal and Toronto on the corridor?
Oop, good question. I know it's not the only one that is unstaffed in the whole network, but uh I I am gonna have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Yeah. My concern there is, you know, I was watching your slide earlier on and it showed your increase uh in customers over uh in twenty nineteen, and there was also an increase in Cornwall. And I can't help but think to myself, if it was staffed and we had customer service, uh how many more people would use your uh your service? Um uh cause as far as I'm aware, the only way to get a ticket is online. And there's a lot of people that uh aren't exactly savvy um that would use your train. Uh so with nobody staffed uh at a secondary station, and I'm quite certain it is the only one uh actually between Montreal and Toronto that is not staffed. Um I think um going forward in the future, that may be something you uh should be considering, is having it staffed again, uh at least during the day, so that everyone has an opportunity to buy a ticket that wants one.
Um, yeah. Okay, well, you know, I noted that. There's a very, very large amount of uh um of of stations that are unstaffed across the country, but I'll have to get back to you precisely on uh if if whether or not it is the only one in uh the corridor. I I
Okay, I can appreciate that. I'd be willing to bet not many of them have a population of fifty thousand, though. But thanks.
Good point.
Counselor Towne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Uh thank you for your presentation. I think Counselor Bennett raised a point I was gonna raise. Uh there was a period of time when I lived in Toronto and I found myself commuting between Cornwall and Toronto rather frequently, and it was by train uh for school and then for work. And uh you know, to the point where I went up to the highest point of the privilege uh or preference program. It's been a little while. You have to excuse me. I I share some of the concerns of my colleagues, uh just because, you know, if we are one of the few stations that are unstaffed, it goes a little bit beyond that. There are folks who may not qualify for credit cards, so there are payment issues, they can't buy a ticket, things like that. These are, these are things to consider. I did have a question, though. You know, in your presentation, you referenced uh investment in the Cornwall station. Do you have a dollar figure for that?
Uh, I don't, not right now. I thought it was in the uh okay, no, it wasn't in the presentation, so I'll get back to you on that, on the investments.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Madam Mayor, just one more thing. Uh through my, when I was commuting via train for twelve years, I did see the decrease in service that took place. I think, uh you know, my colleagues alluded to that, and we're seeing ridership is up from the city, maybe not the same as large urban centers, but there is an increase. I think, uh you know, we we are a town, as Counselor McDonald said, that relies heavily on connecting links. You know, we just real, we just found out bus service from Greyhound is gone. Uh so people do rely on transit like Via Rail to get around um as best they can. So whenever service is reduced, there is an impact to our community, an economical impact. Uh and that's the kind of thing that we are concerned about. And that's the kind of thing, you know, we're here to talk about, and we're gonna represent our our citizens in that regard. So I know there's gonna, there's some tough comments and questions, but I think, you know, when you take this back, uh it's because we wanna see uh Cornwall poised to succeed and have the economic drivers to ensure that. So you know, as as my colleagues mentioned, it's not personal, you're the messenger, but you know, we we do feel that more can be done on Via's behalf in terms of service to the city and uh investments in the station. Because during that time, I I can't even count how many projects I saw at other stations. And then, you know, sometimes here there was nothing at all, even even the paint was peeling and there was rust apparent on the station itself. So it's things like that that, you know, we are concerned about. Thank you.
Any other questions from councils? Madam Clerk, can you put up the slide uh with the the track again?
Just give me a moment, Madam Mayor. I will be able to do that.
Sure.
This one, Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Let's see. Mister Cannon? When we look at Cornwall on that track and we see, and we understand what you mean, you don't, you only own three percent of the track, and so your plan is to own your own track so that you have better control over your scheduling. We heard you. So that track is the blue line north there of Cornwall. So when we're sitting in Cornwall and we're looking at how we're gonna get to that high-frequency place, we see what? Driving from Cornwall to Alexandria to access that? Or from Cornwall to Brockville to access it? Or to Ottawa? Is that, is that what's happening there? When we look at that square, w- we seem to be quite, quite the ones furthest away from accessing that blue line? Or is there another plan for another blue line to connect us to your truck?
So, as I said, the um whole point of the HFR project is to be adding to the network we currently serve. Um and that network is um the approach and the scheduling will be different. Um so Kingston becoming the hub and Kingston having a uh more latitude in the train departures. Um because uh of course, there is a bottleneck in Toronto that is not lived uh or is not a reality elsewhere um in uh in the corridor between Quebec City and Toronto. That gives us more latitude than to have trains leaving earlier uh from Kingston, getting later into Kingston will give latitude along that existing uh network that we operate on. Uh and we do have, and we plan to continue to have those train service agreements with the the uh rail owners. But uh the uh, you know, the uh easiest thing for, not just for me, but for anybody to do would be to say, uh you know, uh until we have those scheduling figured out, uh we will not uh go in uh uh communities and talk about the uh HFR project. What I get from my meeting with uh with you tonight is a a concern about uh service now and moving forward with the HFR project. And and the onus is on us when this project becomes a reality to uh get back, come back to you guys, uh stand in front of you again and be able to have those precise answers uh for you, which, you know, I don't have. We're still years away from uh seeing a train run uh and having a schedule put forward uh on the, on the, on those services. So uh
Okay. Now, Madam Clerk, can you, can you stop the screen share? I just wanna be able to see Mister Cannon. So just to um pick up on a few points, your timing is, or the timing is interesting. Um to Counselor McDonald's point, I did have a meeting with the MPP and the MP last week about this very issue. We are extremely concerned. To Counselor Towne's point, Greyhound buses have stopped service. So when you look at that map, we were just looking at that track, Cornwall looks pretty lonely there as compared to other municipalities. And I have taken the train and I have seen at all other stations investments, not at ours. I know you're gonna get back to us on how much has been invested on the the station locally here, how much in terms of advertising that would be interesting, that you have spent in our area, if you could get us that as well. Because it doesn't feel like there has been much investment at all in Cornwall. Taking a person and staff away, putting up paid parking, has not helped the situation and has sent an opposite message, a message that you don't want our business. And I would say, in addition to Counselor Bennett's point, that we're not just fifty thousand. We have aquasasne there as well. There are fifteen thousand people who use the, who can use the train there, too. We have Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry. Some in Glengarry would benefit if they're gonna be able to access Alexandria, but uh I don't know about, uh I don't know about Stormont and Dundas. So I would argue that there's a hundred thousand people here that are looking at this and thinking, okay, so we have a big strategic plan to grow the region, which, by the way, is working. We are attracting a lot of people. People are moving out of larger centers to live here and work remotely. And at the same time, we're telling them that Via, funded by the federal government with an obligation to connect communities, is saying Cornwall is gonna be lonely. Um we'll get back to you with the scheduling. So here, I'm just, I'm just telling, I'm just telling you, Mister Cannon, that I have heard.
That's what I said. Don't, please, honestly, in all due respect, don't put words in my mouth that I didn't use.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. What I'm saying is we are concerned as a community. That's what we're hearing. That's what you're hearing from this counselor.
That's exactly what I said.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, we want, and we're glad that this is, that this is not yet set in stone. This is the time for us to be telling you and going through our MP and our MPP to tell them that we're here and we want to stay connected with Via. We want to stay connected because we have, we have plans for our community. So yes, Counselor McDonald, your point about Mister Cannon being brave, yes, Mister Cannon. Thank you for coming to the presentation. We invited you and you you graciously accepted our invitation, and we do appreciate that. But this is hard news that's coming because it's uncertain. And it comes on the heels of a lack of investment in our station. So that's what you're hearing. So again, it's not against you personally, Mister Cannon.
I know, we've never met, but.
Yeah, it's to tell you that we're concerned. And I think another counselor wanted to indicate something. So those are my comments, and I I I look forward to uh hearing back on the investments that were spent here, uh and whether we're the only station that is um without staff on the corridor to Counselor Bennett's point.
Well, like I said, ninety percent of the stations are unstaffed across the country, so.
Yeah.
Right.
And 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 as Counselor Bennett responded, there's a number, there's a large uh community here. So we're looking at probably a hundred thousand people. Counselor Hollingsworth, did you wanna add?
No, your wor, no, your worship. Thank you. The question was answered just in your comments. I'm good. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Counselor Gardner?
Make a point. Uh and the point is, I have a lady up the street from me who's an elderly lady who goes to Colbert four to six times a year and does not have the access of someone helping her get a ticket at the station. So I end up doing all the work for her through through here, so Via can get business. Uh if someone was at that station, she would go there herself and buy the tickets. However, she can't do that, and she's not uh computer literate.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Gardner. And I I I know that uh Mister Cannon has taken notes throughout uh throughout the uh question period. Mister Cannon, anything further?
Well, the uh whole point is to better serve communities. I'm uh, you invite me again, I'll come back again. My job is to make sure that I keep those uh communication channels open uh with uh with everyone. Notwithstanding, uh I'd say uh issues and 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 uh and concerns from your uh citizens and the people you represent. Um and uh I'm uh I'm sure that uh there is a work, and I'm not sure. Uh there are answers that I'll get for you, and and there is work that needs to be done um on our end as well. Um I think to have those communication channels open and to be able uh as well to uh explain uh better understand um your concerns and and uh be able to better serve you within the limits of uh the uh budgets that are uh given to us. Uh and to make the most of uh all the Canadian uh taxpayers' dollars and um to put forward uh the project we have and to be able to uh uh be, yeah, to enhance that rail, passenger rail service and and to bring it up to a level. And we uh did meet with uh uh Mister Duncan a few weeks ago. And uh I I never turned down a invitation to uh be able to hear the concerns uh and uh have a uh frank and open uh discussion and dialogue about how we can make. uh discussion and dialogue about how we can make things better.
Thank you for your candor. When you're not sure, you say you're not sure, and when you say you're going to get us an answer, then you're going to do that. So we'll look forward to hearing you on the points raised by Councillors Bennett and Towndale. Nous apprécions votre présentation. Ce ne sont pas des bonnes nouvelles pour notre com- notre communauté, mais nous apprécions quand même que vous soyez ici. And we'll look forward to open communication, we do appreciate that, and we do thank you for accepting our invitation so readily.
Merci d'avoir reçu, puis évidemment vous comprendrez que je partage pas tout à fait votre point de vue, mais on pourra continuer à se parler, Madame la MRS.
Good, communication is good. Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We have a second presentation this evening, the architectural design of our new fire station. And I believe that our Fire Chief Jeff Weaver will in, uh will introduce our um presenters from JL Richards.
Thank you, I see Madam CAO on screen. Did you want to give some introductory remarks before we go to Chief Weaver?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, no, I just wanted to make sure that uh we had an opportunity to introduce our guests.
Okay, Chief Weaver.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Tonight, we present our initial design and Class D opinion on probable construction costs based on their preliminary design plans for Fire Station Number One. I have with us tonight representatives from JL Richards, but before I introduce them, I would like to briefly explain the design criteria that we planned into this building that may not have been anticipated when we started the design discussions uh until we just uh started our designs discussions with JL Richards. As you know, our current fire headquarters building was built in nineteen seventy. After almost fifty years of service, our fire station, our fire service uh programmatic needs have far exceeded the building's capabilities. Uh, the future design considers the following. Fire hall needs to be a post-disaster structure um that it may uh must be able to withstand natural forces and remain as a functional structure. That a new station has uh an improved public presence and access. The wayfinding uh and design of the structure will guide our visitors to the public service areas, creating a welcoming presence. An improved training capacity for our service as well as to provide for the delivery of public education programs, regional training for the Ontario Fire College and contribute to training resource spaces within the corporation. A station that will meet accessibility standards. A station that will be gender neutral and ensure the safety, security and privacy of our current and future staff. This includes restrooms, change and shower facilities as well as rest areas of the structure. A decontamination area provide, uh providing a uh procedure for full decontamination of staff, equipment and PPP, PPE after a fire incident prior to staff entering the crew or administrative area. And a net zero focus on energy efficiency and a future focus on maintaining a low building operating costs. We are continuing to look at options for funding um uh, for funding predicated on a net zero energy design, but will require confirmation through Cornwall Electric. Nonetheless, our baseline design will still incorporate sustainable measures and strive for low or even if possible uh zero carbon footprint. The design looks to meet our current needs with a focus on future growth and expansion. Madam Mayor, without further delay, I'd like to introduce you to our presenters, Orlando, Sebastian and Jared from uh JL Richards to review the station design. Uh, and I'm going to share my screen and allow you to see uh the same presentation that you already have in your package, if that's a possibility here.
Welcome to our three presenters.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and councillors. We're very pleased um to be involved in this very important project. So as the Chief Weaver said, uh my name is Orlando Barone, I am a senior architect and project manager uh for this project, I'm joined this evening by Sebastian Gassin, Associate Senior Architect and Project Director, and also by Jared Carrier, uh our Energy Systems Engineer, uh who will be able to field any uh questions specifically related to innovative energy, uh net zero energy design and uh low carbon design, if, if that should come up. So uh I will uh in the time allotted, attempt to give a very brief and succinct um summary of the design thus far, the conceptual design thus far um uh based on the package you already have. So um, we've been very privileged and very happy to work very closely with Chief Weaver so far uh and liaising with his staff as well as Mr. Dixon and Mr. Fotherup. Um, so um, beginning with the site plan, uh we've um come to site the building on the chosen site at the corner of Tollgate and Brookdale. Uh, and the natural sighting is at the uh southwest corner, which uh will facilitate access to and from the facility for both emergency vehicles and passenger vehicles. Uh, you'll see on the site plan the way the building is amassed, uh there is a large uh square-ish block which will house the apparatus base where all the emergency uh vehicles uh will be housed and then attached to that is a uh, a, a C shape, if you will, uh with a central decontamination area and then an administration wing and a operations wing, which we can look at in more detail when we get to the floor plan. This creates a central courtyard, uh which we'll again, we'll see in more detail when we get to the floor plan. Um, the intent here is um first of all um to separate the access for the emergency vehicles from the passenger vehicles. So you can see in front of the apparatus bays, um a very wide tarmac, if you will, uh which is very common um in uh fire station design, which is basically the whole width of the uh, of the, of the bays uh uh housing the emergency vehicles. And this allows them for quick and direct access out onto the public thoroughfare uh onto Tollgate. So this was a strategic placement um of the tarmac, allowing the emergency vehicles to exit onto Tollgate a sufficient distance from the uh intersection. And then we have a separate entrance for uh visitors and staff coming, arriving in passenger vehicles to a separate parking lot which wraps around uh the front of the building and uh the courtyard. Uh, and this um is connected actually to the tarmac um by a connection which will be used in, in case of uh uh maneuvers necessary uh for vehicles potentially during training or backing into the apparatus bays, or if ever there would be a need to transit uh from the tarmac to the parking lot. If, for example, a visitor accidentally uh drove onto the tarmac instead of taking the dedicated visitor parking entrance. You'll also note that uh we've allowed for drive-through bays, which explains why there is a access road allowing fire vehicles to also uh upon return enter at the rear of the apparatus bay and potentially if necessary, vehicles to exit from the rear and then take that access road out onto the tarmac and to the, to the public thoroughfare. Uh, at the rear of the site, you will see uh in the northwest corner where we have uh begun laying out the exterior training area, where there will be a granular area for storing um uh ad hoc training uh devices, a level concrete pad uh where these uh training exercises can be set up. And then another granular area where uh prefabricated uh training system basically made out of container blocks can be installed uh in a semi-permanent fashion for uh training exercises. Uh, as this also speaks to the potential of this acting uh becoming a regional uh training center. So um Chief, if we could go to the next slide, um we can now look uh more in depth at the uh floor plan. Uh, so you'll note that um the orientation of the building also um is, is meant to maximize uh an east-west orientation. Um, this will uh maximize solar exposure and also minimize uh exposure to prevailing winds. Uh, so here we see the three main organizational blocks of the program in green. Uh, the apparatus base where all the emergency response vehicles will be housed. Then in orange, the decontamination area, uh which must be uh Jason, right adjacent to the apparatus base. And then we see uh perpendicular to the apparatus bay, the operations wing, where the firefighters will basically uh will have, be housed uh and spend most of their uh off-duty time. Uh, at the center of the uh C-shaped wings is the uh fitness room, which acts as a connecting point between the two wings, uh which uh we see at the uh bottom of the screen at an angle, the administration wing. So here is where the public entrance is and where uh administrative functions are housed and other firefighting uh staff and personnel that don't necessarily need to be uh proximate to the apparatus base. So looking at the layout of the apparatus base, we have five uh total double deep bays, uh two of which you see are uh deeper at approximately a hundred feet and the other three bays at approximately eighty feet deep. So what this allows is for actually all the vehicles to be parked inside and uh it allows for two free bays or two free half bays, as you see in Bay one and two, uh which can be used for uh training purposes and could also be used when other vehicles will come on site for training purposes from other stations. And also potentially if in the future, other vehicles are purchased that need to be permanently housed uh within, within the apparatus floor. So uh you can see here very quickly, your pumper and your rescue vehicle are in Bay one and two. They are the most often solicited vehicles and are there uh ready to respond. Uh, in Bay three, uh we see the rescue boat um which is, would be hooked up to its vehicle on a trailer, also ready to respond. Um, and then in uh Bay four and five, we see the aerial uh ladder truck, which is the longer one at the rear. And then at the front, uh the, the other pumper truck. And in the final Bay five, we see a configuration where the remaining two vehicles uh would be parked and hooked up to their trailer, also ready to exit either via the front or the rear uh to get towards the public thoroughfare. Uh, adjacent to this, as I mentioned, is a decontamination area, uh an area that's not really uh fully fleshed out in your current station. So here we have a proper decontamination area, firefighters return from a call, they immediately enter the uh decontamination room where they shed their gear that is uh potentially contaminated uh with materials from the fire. And then they enter into the decon shower and uh their contaminated gear goes into a special um uh gear wash machine. Um, and then there is also separate uh laundry facilities for uniforms. So the idea is here that firefighters have a proper decontamination area uh to go through before they return to the station. Uh, adjacent to this is the bunker gear storage room where that gear uh that I was mentioning before is stored uh when not uh ready uh to be used on a call. And then immediately below that, we have the area of, which will be used for maintenance and also to store the uh SCBA, the self-contained breathing apparatus tanks uh which the firefighters must use uh to breathe when they enter a uh fire situation. So uh moving uh onto the um operations wing, we see uh along the north edge of the building, the gender-neutral dorms, which again is not something that your current station is able to, to provide. Uh, so this allows uh well, safety and privacy, a gender-neutral environment uh with individual dorms. Uh, ten dorms are shown in all, um eight standard dorms and then two officer dorms, which are slightly larger. And uh you see these alcoves in front of each dorm, which allow for four full-height built-in lockers, uh which means that uh each person on the four shifts has their own dedicated locker in this alcove. Uh, and then the idea is that you either are changing in your dorm or in the gender-neutral shower uh areas. And you can access uh your personal gear in, uh in your locker at your alcove at any time. So, so here we see across from the dorm uh wing, these again, gender-neutral uh showers and washrooms individuals, so allowing for uh changing um in, in these individual uh washrooms, again, without the need for um a large mixed locker room. And adjacent to this, we have the day room uh where the firefighters will spend off-duty hours. And adjacent to that, a generous uh kitchen uh area and dining area uh where there will be ample space uh for multiple shifts of firefighters to prepare and, and eat meals. Um, and then you see that the uh gym, as I mentioned, which is an important part um of the facility and an area where there could be, uh you know, a meeting between staff members in the different wings uh is in the center and anchors the space. And what's nice here is that uh these areas used by the firefighters the most often, the gym, the day room and the kitchen, all have a visual or a di- direct connection to this courtyard we've created between the two wings, which becomes a much-needed outdoor amenity space and a tranquil space um and an interesting uh space as well uh that could be perceived by uh visitors to the site and others uh transiting around the site. Uh, and then the final wing is the, what we call the admin- administration wing. So here, this is the wing where the public would enter uh and visitors. So there would be a generous entrance here at the front, uh which we'll see later in the perspective views. Uh, we'll have a treatment uh with a roof treatment and curtain wall uh welcoming the visitor in into a waiting area where they can interface with the receptionist. And in this uh waiting area, they will have, again, we've inserted some uh glazing curtain wall to allow this view into that courtyard space for the visitor. And then the wing uh continues immediately to the east with our uh functions, our office of offices for the Fire Chief, the Deputy Fire Chief, as well as offices for the Fire Prevention Officers and support spaces such as library for uh technical manuals. Then to the west of the public entrance, uh we also have uh the interview room, which uh may need to be used uh to interview members of the public. Other support spaces such as a copy room, a boardroom, and then a uh large training room, which again is not something that um you, you currently have at your headquarters. Uh, the training room uh sort of doubles as the dormitory. Here we have a generous dedicated training room uh that can, that will have a central folding partition, which will give us a possibility to divide it in two. So it can be set up for a large training exercises. It can be set up to have two events going on simultaneously. And of course, it, what's also interesting here is that can be used by the public, potentially rented out to the public uh for, for private use or used for educational purposes. Um, and also should the station be used as a backup uh emergency operations center, this will be a very useful space uh to have this dedicated uh large training room, which can be divided in two. Uh, and then adjacent to this is the storage for um chairs and tables to reconfigure the space as required. Uh, and then uh adjacent to this is uh another storage area and a training officer's office, which has a view onto the tarmac, uh so they can see vehicles uh entering and exiting. So Chief, if we could go to the uh overall view, here is a conceptual rendering of the building and overall view where we see uh the large volume of the apparatus bay, uh which we attempt to link into the wings of the admin and operations wing with this high parapet you see here at an angle, uh which can also be used to screen any mechanical units depending on the final design of the mechanical systems. Uh, there may be units on the roof which will be screened by this high parapet, or it may be enclosed in a sort of uh mechanical penthouse. And here we see the two wings embracing this courtyard with its amenity spaces and landscaping. Uh, at the, at, at min wing, we see this uh articulation in the roof, which signals the entrance and welcomes in the public. Uh, there is curtain wall here as well uh to provide uh view and cues uh to the entrance. Uh, you'll see here that um the, the roof scape is a low-sloping standing sea metal roof, uh which is a, a very uh robust type of roof with a long life. Um, and, and is, would be very suited to potentially introducing things like solar panels on the roof, which you see here illustrated um for uh, you know, conceptual uh discussion purposes at this point. Uh, but that is a potential right there, those can be clipped on directly to the standing sea metal roof. And here we again, see in this view, the parking wrapping around um, which is going to provide access uh as well uh not only for visitors and clerical staff, but firefighters can also park, you see here at this end of the parking lot and have a separate entrance uh directly into their dorm area. Uh, the general idea is that the cladding will be uh i- in this rendering is shown as an insulated metal panel, which is a very uh, uh again, robust and economical cladding um and uh, and can achieve high insulation values and also is very quick to uh, to install. Uh, and then here as well, uh as this accent material which you see used at the front um in key areas and the office area and the training room area, and then you see also used again in the courtyard, um this accent material here, uh we have several options, we're looking at cement board uh which you see in this rendering and we have a couple of other options, which I, I won't go through, but you see in the package where uh we're, we're using masonry as an accent material, a bit of a darker red masonry, and then it's also an option with a, a, a more uh somber-colored terracotta. So here we see the view looking uh head-on at the main facade, again, you see the. Again, you see the entrance with its curtain wall and roof articulation, the pattern of windows. We've attempted to create an efficient envelope, but at the same time, by creating that C-shaped with the courtyard, we're able to bring natural light to all the spaces, except the mechanical spaces basically and, and bathrooms. So, so this was important as well. And here you see the elevation of the, of the five overhead doors for the five bays, fire engine bays. You see this angle here, creating a small soffit over the overhead doors, providing shelter. And this is also an opportunity to introduce some translucent panels, which could even provide some additional natural light into the apparatus bay. And here's a view looking into that courtyard where you see a very good potential for amenity spaces spilling out from the other spaces I mentioned that the firefighters use the most often, the gym, the day room, the kitchen and dining area. And it will allow views across from both wings and through to the, the public entrance and is an opportunity also for landscaping elements. And finally, Chief, if we go to page five, you see the view at the rear of the station, where again, you see your access from the rear to the apparatus base. And here the series of windows of, of the dorm rooms, which are looking out to the northwest with a more moderate lighting, which is appropriate for, for that space. And they have a, a nice view towards the wooded area across from the training area, which we saw in the overhead view. So in closing, we, we are right out of the gate prioritizing sustainable design. These are things that are second nature to us at J L Richards in the design. So irrespective of LEED certification or not, we're going to implement a high efficiency envelope, we're going to implement high efficiency mechanical systems. Then the next possible step, and this is what the chief alluded to, we, we need to research potential funding opportunities to add things like solar panels and potentially also geothermal, which would allow us to potentially have a net zero energy design building and then potentially also to get FCM funding to cover the capital costs of that. So we're in the process of studying that at this point and further research needs to be done there. But this is, this is where our design is, is tending towards, even as a baseline. So I think that summarizes the overall, the overall intent at this point, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. Hi, Chief Weber, is there any other, did you want to have any comment before we go to council?
Correct. So, so I will also ask Orlando to do a quick summary of our Class D estimate, if you will, to take a look at that, kind of just to, to walk through very briefly, the, the kind of included costs with that construction estimate. So I'm going to share that screen next through you, Madam Mayor. And if that's okay with council, we'll do that first and then we'll come back to questions if that's a possibility.
Council's nodding. Go ahead, Chief Weber.
So you should see a screen with that elemental cost summary.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Orlando?
Okay. So yes, thank you, Chief. So here as we see, we're, this is our opinion of probable construction cost. It's not a detailed quantity survey or takeoff as a contractor would do. This is an estimate of potential construction costs based on the conceptual design at this time. And since we only have a conceptual design, that's why this is what is known as a Class D estimate. And then as a project progresses, we will, you know, we will be doing Class C, B, and eventually A cost estimates as the design becomes more and more detailed. So this is the first level of estimate, if you will, which is why it has higher contingencies and higher range than the other estimates, which will be based on a more refined design. So here, this is what's called an elemental summary. And it's basically broken down into the structural foundations, the above grade structure, such as the steel beams and columns and the steel deck, et cetera. And then the exterior walls, which I mentioned, constructed an insulated metal panel with some kind of accent cladding, whether that be terracotta panels, for example. And it also includes any doors, windows, curtain wall and roofing system. And then we go into the interior, so all the interior walls, doors and partitions. And then we have a mechanical and electrical breakdown as well. And finally, anything related to site work, so all that has to do with paving, site drainage, et cetera, and grading. So, and this includes also the, the basic site work that we discussed for the training area. So it doesn't include things like the training elements or the prefabricated training structures, but it includes all the site works, so the site preparation, the granular fill or the concrete packs. And this is what brings us to a net building cost of 7.6 million approximately. To this, we need to add on the general requirements, which is basically the contractor's overhead and profit, which is an industry standard 10%. And then on to this, we add on contingencies for both design and construction, which is again, pretty standard for this type of estimate. So, so we were pretty optimistic here with a 5% design contingency and 5% construction contingency. So this brings us to a total estimate for the building and the site work at approximately 9.1 million. And then separate to this, we've broken out rough capital cost estimates for integrating potentially these two renewable energy systems, so photovoltaics, referring to solar panels on the roof and geothermal, referring to a system that can be used to heat and cool the building by using the passive temperature of the ground, soil or water. And then we've separated these out and the rough capital costs for this is currently at 700,000. And this is something that we need to explore, potentially receiving funding to cover. So if we were to include that upfront into the cost of the building, that would give us our total construction base building estimate, that would be for the base building design plus the site work design, plus the integration of those two renewable energy systems would bring us to the 9.97 billion approximately. And as I mentioned, this excludes soft costs such as that training equipment that I referred to, as well as things like furniture, IT, security, telecommunications, equipment such as computers and, and also elements that would also be considered soft costs, such as like engineering fees, land acquisition costs and any costs that would be needed for any required studies such as surveys, topographic surveys, geotechnical investigations, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Barone.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counsel. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Your Worship. A couple of questions. First of all, forgive me for looking at my phone. I got this email up by the union that says, and I quote, "A reason for selecting this location was to allow for space for live fire training facility. Come to our attention, presentations and agenda that there is not a training facility." Yeah, and I'm hearing you saying there is a training facility. So is there a training facility or is there not a training facility? To whomever wants to tackle the question.
So through you, Madam Mayor, we are doing, Counselor Hollingsworth, we are doing the site preparation for the training facility. We have not included any of the training facility, other than, other than the training classroom, we have not included any of the training facility amenities. There are a few amenities that we would move from our current training site. However, to build a proper system to do live fire, appropriate live fire training and in an engineered, properly designed facility, there, that's, that is a project that's not funded at this time. However, we have a number of props that, like a propane prop that we have not initiated at this point, that we would like to take advantage of and place on that. The concept with the concrete kind of pad is more of a container style, bring in, you know, a certain container that has a number of training props in it. We would take advantage of those props at that time. Each of those would have to be developed and budgeted and that would, over time, we would develop those training props.
Now, was, was that component or part of the origin, like have we removed it or is it just something we never really had in place in the first place? Like initially, when we talked about it, did we have that? And we've taken it out? Or is it, yeah, we sort of thought, wouldn't it be nice, but it was never really part of the project in the grand scheme of things?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I don't, I, I'm, unfortunately, I was not here during that time, but I don't believe the budget in the Colliers' report indicated the full development of the training facility at that time.
So we haven't technically removed anything? We're just, it's just, we haven't taken any, we haven't reduced the project from what we voted on about a year and a half ago. Is that making sense?
Through you, Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. So the second thing I want to ask to our design guys, what is the current rate of inflation on these types of projects? So we said, yeah, let's go ahead, it's 10 million bucks, but it's going to take us, you know, 12 months to start digging and building and doing our thing. What is the current, current, and I realize the construction industry has been crazy, so I get that you're doing your best guess, but what's the current rate of inflation on these projects from the time we approve it today, to the time we have a show, to the time we put the final dab of paint on the front door saying, welcome to the fire department?
Is that for Mr. Barone?
Whoever wants to try it.
Chief Weber?
As you know, through you, Madam Mayor, as you know, the requirements at this time certainly have to take into effect a lot of different things, including the impact that COVID has had on our construction world. And it certainly has taken, has, we have to take into effect the other components of that, that the impact of supply chain and things like that have had on building materials as well. I will kind of, I'm going to lean on Orlando as well to provide some commentary on that. However, I'll just give one more caveat with that discussion. Again, this will be more indicative to a construction company to really be able to determine those costs going forward, but I'll let Orlando add a piece of that as well.
Mr. Barone?
Thank you, Chief. Perhaps Sebastian could speak to this with, with more experience, but I just want to underline that we do acknowledge that COVID-19 will obviously be a factor. It's impossible to quantify that as a contingency. So that's why you don't see a COVID contingency in the opinion of probable cost. But we, we have to be aware it's a factor and this could also depend on when we choose to tender the project. That's really the moment where you have the true idea of the, of the cost, barring, you know, the certain normal contingencies or extras you would expect during the course of construction, but once you have those, those tenders in. In terms of escalation, I know pre-COVID, usually I've seen escalation rates of something like five to 7% per year. But perhaps Sebastian, if, if you could speak to that in a bit more detail.
Monsieur Ressin?
Yes, thank you. Exactly as Orlando was mentioned, the, the OPCC we provided is based on information, if you could say, pre-COVID. We factored in some movements that we see on the market right now, but it's in constant movement. So instead of, of including a contingency that could be 20, 25, 30% at this point and identifying this as COVID, we, we put in a disclaimer saying that we have to monitor as we go and the risk is there, that the, the current market is, is, is in big fluctuation right now. For an example, the, the steel industry, the, the steel structure have almost doubled in the last year.
If I might, Your Worship, I know this is coming up as a debate, but I'll save some time. I think, gentlemen, your contingency is way too low. I think that, I realize you, you base it on numbers, but I would have preferred to see a higher contingency and say, look, how much money we saved on the project rather than coming in low. And I believe most of us in this room already know that's not going to be the real number. Anyway, that's pretty much all I have to say, Your Worship. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, Council.
Counselor Grant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to disagree with one thing, the, that Chief Weber said, one of the things that attracted me to this facility, especially the location, was that training facility. It was, we talked about revenue generation to help offset some of these costs. That training center was going to be part of that revenue generator. So I have to disagree with what you said. It was always part of it and, and that was the reason for it. But is this considered the Cadillac of fire hall stations? Because man, I've gone to resorts that weren't this pretty.
Through you, Madam Mayor. No, I'm sorry, no, this is not a Cadillac of stations. We've incorporated a number of design features that, and as you saw with the kind of the dorm space, as well as the washroom space, this is a much needed upgrade to our kind of gender neutral environment that we're trying to promote in our, in our living quarters. These staff live with each other 24/7 and they are there on a 24-hour basis. That, it is a heavy use area, if you consider your own home, that you're in there for 12 hours a day or 14 hours a day, as opposed to the use that a fire hall gets with a 24/7 operation. It's a heavy use space, it's a heavy use area. It's not to impose any kind of resort space or design. We are trying to design some newer kind of approach or elements to it with the, the shape that we currently have or with the shape that we're proposing. It provides for an interior space that has a kind of a natural lean towards a courtyard and provides an opportunity to give an amenity, a natural amenity space in the center. That may not be used by the firefighters, it may not be just a relaxation area. However, you know, the elements that we've added are elements that we already have in our own station that we currently have. We have a workout facility that probably, that is very close to rivaling the size of the workout facility that we're adding to the station. We have a kitchen and dining space in our current station. This one is slightly bigger. We have a, we have dorms. Unfortunately, those dorms are part of the, of the training room. It's a double use room and it does not provide for the safety, security and privacy of our sta, our staff currently. The other ability for that is it allows for quiet study space for each individual in those dorm spaces. And, and as I said, it protects and promotes the privacy of the individual. The contamination space is a new element in fire hall design and certainly is something that is desired within the, the fire hall structure. It allows us to be able to clean and decontaminate an individual without moving through the private or the, the crew area to, to the showers and potentially contaminating and eating or common space. The old style was you wore your boots right to your bed, you took your boots off and you, your boots were right beside you all the time. The, the style and design now is we do not want that contamination to be right beside a person or individual while they're breathing and sleeping and so on, so forth. We want to provide for an ability to stop that contamination from entering our, our kind of crew area, if you will, or even our administrative area. The administrative area is not designed to be a resort space as well. It is attacking or providing for spaces that we currently do not have. That we currently do not have, we do not have a centralized meeting space. Uh, we don't have a large, um, training room space. Uh, that can be used as a corporate resource. Uh, and certainly not as a, uh, is not adequate. Uh, to fit a, uh, training class, whether that's for public education. Like, um, students or children coming to the fire hall. Uh, or for, uh, a regional training, uh, uh, purpose. As you alluded to, uh, at the beginning of your statement in regards to, uh, providing, uh, regional training for the, uh, Ontario Fire College. So I hope that answered some of those questions, and certainly the size of the apparatus floor. Uh, is programing, uh, pro- programmatically, a little bit larger than. What the, uh, original plan was for, uh, or from the, uh, plan from, uh, the Colliers Report. Um, but the, uh, space provided allows for, um. The, uh, use of the, uh, apparatus floor in behind the vehicles. It allows for a safer drive-through format. Um, that protects our employees from, uh, uh, the, the, the back, the backing in that we currently do off of Fourth Street. Um, and it provides for interior storage and maintenance of all of our, uh, equipment and, uh, vehicles that we currently have.
The only other comment I have to make is that I see this as an additional cost. By going to 24-hour sis- shift schedule, I know we lost that arbitration, but this is another cost because. I worked a 12-hour shift, I never had a bed to go to.
Madam CIO, did you, did you want to comment? I saw you, uh, unmute yourself and then mute yourself.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, the apparatus bay area is, uh, a little bit bigger. But consistent with what we also would like to do in our municipal works area. We have some very expensive, uh, equipment and vehicles. And we want to make sure that it's well protected and kept inside. I think the additional space on the floor is important. Also to this, uh, fire hall will be a good public facility, it'll be an area that can receive people in the community. Receive classrooms, education, public education. And the one thing that we've always, uh, found, I think, within our city facilities. Is we very quickly, uh, borderline and run out of space. Uh, I think many of our, uh, counselors can, can, uh, comment on how. Frequent, all of our rooms are being used everywhere amongst all of our facilities. So within this facility, there's also a great area for, uh, the public to come in, whether it's a classroom. Whether it's a public engagement session. Uh, it's great meeting space, it can also just be used in general for the public, but I think we also want the public to. Feel comfortable going into the fire station, and this is going to have a, a front area that's going to receive people that we've never had before. No offense to the current fire hall, but it is not very welcoming for someone to walk into that fire hall. And be received if they have questions or if they want some assistance. Or if they want to ask a question, it's just not, it's just not set up that way.
Thank you. Counselor Mack and then Counselor Gardner and then Counselor Virgil. Counselor Mack?
Yeah, not that, uh, not to belabor this, but, um, the training center was a. Selling component when the pitch was made, uh, I was under the impression. We're going to be a training center and on the county's fire departments, we're going to pay to be trained here and whatnot, but. Uh, that being that, um, when it comes to the cost and inflation and especially. Construction costs when it comes, I, I. You'd almost need a Ouija bullet for it to figure out what it's going to cost another year, year and a half, probably give you a better result. But it wouldn't be outrageous to say, we're having, we got a $14 million dollar building on our hands. Cost of land, you talk about, uh, soft costs and capital costs, et cetera. Either two of the gentlemen, with 14 million, you'd say you're crazy, it won't be that high, or it's just one of those cases where. You'll get into a taxi and you turn on the meter, you don't know when it's going to stop.
Madam CIO, did you want to answer?
Uh, so I'd like to maybe just make some comments about the training center, so when we, uh, acquired this site. Absolutely, the training, uh, the training facility was part of that. Uh, intent with acquiring the site. The site prep work is done to be able to have that training, uh, facility in place or put in place. What we also want to do is we're going to want to come back to council with a business plan to talk about. How we can become potentially a regional training facility and what that will do to benefit, uh. I think, uh, other fire services and reasonable close proximity. And and that will help fund the cost of the training center, so. Um, you're absolutely right, it was a big part of the component of looking at a site like this, and the size of the site. Allows us to have a proper training facility.
I, I'm just wondering, or to consult, could tell us about the? Project, I, I, the comment I made, like, wouldn't be a, oh, I'm not going to be surprised if we end up with a $14 million dollar construction, uh, site. Uh, project.
Mr. Barone or Mr. Racine?
We are mandated to work on the construction cost of the facility. So we, we, we don't know about land acquisition cost and 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 potential soft costs that. Have already been spent, um, uh, so it's hard to comment on, on, on this. Um, our opinion is, is in the OPCC we presented concerning the construction costs itself.
Cost, I mean, we're going to build it. I guess the argument from our friends over at the firefighters association is the. Location, not the costs. Doesn't matter where we build it, the costs aren't going to change. Uh, Chief Weber, there, uh, the president of the association is concerned about response times. Uh, be far, move farther away from where the fires really occur in this community. Um, do you have a map anywhere in your office or you could sit down and maybe? In the near future and tell me in the last four years. Where the fires have occurred, where your fire calls have been, not medical calls, fire calls.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, Mr. Counselor McIntosh, of course, we can look at that anytime you wish.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm saying, I'm, uh. It's something they brought up, and I'd like to see that, uh, to, uh, you know, where you're fighting the fires. I realize the north end and the west end is. It's got to be covered, and this goes back 40 years, we've been, the community's been talking about having a. A station in the north end, and at that time they were talking three stations, of course. Uh, that's something we can't afford, and this seems to be a suitable solution, but I'd really like to see. Uh, responding to the, uh. Firefighters Association concerns about where the fires are and where their calls are and the response times and. Somewhere down low, you can provide that with us, I don't think I need a motion, you could bring back and say, here, here's where they are.
Thank you, Counselor Mack, yep, you heard Chief Weber say he would do that, so, thank you. Counselor Gardner and then Counselor Virgil.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor, um. Uh, when I first read the report, I was really taken aback by the cost and the increase in the cost. Probably 1.9, 1.5. However, having been on council, uh, when we built the Benson Center. That was a $30 million dollar deal. Uh, the aquatic center was a almost $10 million dollar deal, 9 million, 9.5. So we're looking at $40 million for recreation. We're going to be spending money on the, uh, uh, Gado Park. Uh, recreation again. We have a service here that saves lives and saves infrastructure. When the, when they're on fire and the multitude of other services that. The fire department, uh, provides. Uh, I'm going to be in favor of, when it comes to avoid. Knowing that at the end of the day, when the RFP, uh, comes back, that we have a choice whether to approve it then or not. However, if we're looking at 11, 12, 14 million dollars, not spent on recreation, but life-saving, uh, devices. Uh, I will support that, I think our north end of the city deserves it. Uh, they've been asking for it, as Counselor McIntosh said, for years. And so I'm not, I'm not going to back off on this, I think it has to be done. Um, and we got to move the fire department out of the Fourth Street where, where they're stuck in one ways all the time, so. Uh, that's all I had, it was a comment, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, if we spend 40, 50 million dollars on recreation, we can bloody well spend money on services that are going to save lives.
Counselor Virgil?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll, I have some comments to say when we get to voting, but. Um, as it relates to this presentation, are we saying that? For the record, the training center was not part of the request for quotation? In terms of coming back with a price and a design?
Madam CIO?
Uh, I don't, I don't. No, Counselor Gardner, I believe that the point of the training center was to come back with a business plan. And a big part of funding that training center would also come by paying. For it by the users that are benefiting from the training. So from this perspective, the equipment has not been. Has not been included in this, uh, presentation this evening. But the plan for that would be to have something that would have a business model that will help pay for it, so it will benefit. It'll benefit our community, but it will also benefit the mi- the smaller municipalities around us as well, if they would like to utilize that for training.
Counselor Virgil?
Thank you, I think. From, uh, Counselor Virgil, not from me, Madam, uh, CIO. Uh, you addressed the answer to me, and it wasn't me that asked that question. That was Counselor Virgil who asked the question.
Thank you, Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, I've lost my train of thought now. Uh, uh, look, I, I just, I disagree with that, I do think that. This was meant to be part of what we're talking about today is, is to get a full. Scope, I certainly welcome a business plan, but the fact that we're looking at a new budget. Uh, much higher, which for the record, I believe, does not include the cost already of purchasing the land and for this design work, correct?
Who will answer that? Madam CIO?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, I will pull out the previous information that was communicated to council.
Oh, uh, Madam CFO has appeared on screen?
Yeah.
Through you, Madam Mayor, maybe just directly regarding, uh, costs that we've incurred to date. Uh, it is not included in the estimate that you see before you. Uh, so we probably have committed about 1.9 million dollars, that would include. Uh, the cost of the land and the cost, uh, for, uh, J.L. Richards, um. Uh, consulting, uh, work for architectural and engineering design.
Counselor Virgil?
Yeah, thank you, that answers my question, I just want to make sure that, that we're all aware that. That's roughly $2 million that have already been spent, so, uh, the rest of my comments, look, I think. I think it looks great, it's a very well-designed building, but. Uh, I don't think meets the criteria that we've asked for, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, any other comments from Chief Weber? Or the consultants? In response to any of the questions you heard?
If I may, Madam Mayor. Thank you, uh, about the training center, uh, so like it was said, the, uh, the training equipment outside. Uh, is not provided in the cost estimate, but, um, maybe we can differentiate the inside, interior training. Uh, which you have these two big, um, this one room that can be divided in two and can house, uh, uh, about 50 people. So that, that's, um, that's something that was in the program at the beginning and that was maintained, uh, through the, the program. Uh, to the development of the concept, and i- i- it's something that you don't see in other fire station that are not. Uh, training centers as well, and the site is large enough to receive the training and the preparation of the site. Is done at the back and that's in the, uh, cost estimate, it's only the props that goes on the, uh. On the training land that are not incorporated right now in the cost we supplied.
Thank you, Mr. Racine, Chief Weber?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, I would echo those comments and, uh. And I guess I would add the, uh, facts that, uh. Yes, that, uh, we had, uh, a big sell on this point was, uh, maybe I made an error. Uh, that the, the big sell on this point was that, that with the training facility in this area. Uh, that we could provide not only for, um, training to our surrounding departments. But also participate in becoming a regional training center, um, in the future. Uh, that being, uh, said, I don't know that the, uh, full budget, uh, estimate included. Um, the building of the training facility, uh, or the, um, props, uh, on the facility, land or facility site. Um, as well as that, a number of our programs that are delivered through the, um. Uh, regional training centers or the Ontario Fire College are, are, um, uh, focused on the classroom. Uh, are focused on, uh, other aspects other than live fire training as well. Uh, so a number of those will be able to go off without having a full training facility or full training. Uh, area, uh, fully developed and ready to go. Um, this is something that we want to see, uh, developed over time as well. Uh, and provide for, uh, that kind of, uh, uh, effort or training in the future.
Thank you for that clarification, Chief Weber. Madam Clerk, I think we've moved up the. Communication report attached to this presentation, so the next step would be?
We, we're going to address the communication report now, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, it, it's a four-part recommendation. The first one, A, to receive the presentation provided by J.L. Richards and Associates Limited. Approve in principle the architectural design of the new fire station. Authorize administration to continue into the design phase of the project, developing the final draft designs for the new fire station. And lastly, authorize administration in conjunction with JLR. To prepare and issue an RFP for the construction of the new fire station.
Counsel? We need a motion to be able to proceed. Counselor Dupell? Uh, what's your motion, Counselor Dupell?
To approve the following recommendations, Madam Mayor.
As, as indicated by the clerk?
Yes.
Thank you, is there a second or for that? Counselor Eba? Discussion? Counselor Virgil, Counselor Hollingsworth, Counselor Towndale and then Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so like I said, I, I, I would not vote, there's four different things here, so I'll address them each. One at a time, I would not vote to accept the presentation. I do think a really large part of this project was the training center. Uh, I, I was quite disappointed not to see it, I, I remain, of course, completely opposed to the location we've chosen, but that's not. The discussion for today, uh. When I look at this budget and I see that we're talking about $10 million plus the two we've already spent. Plus now adding, uh, a training center, which is an unknown cost. I really think, uh, we should hit the pause button on this project, take a, take a look at it again, because. I firmly believe the, the understanding was. That a training center was a big part of this budget, that $9 million. And now we're hearing that $9 million is not the land and is not the training center, and that. To me is quite disappointing to hear. Thank you.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, your worship, um, I, I think the contingency is too low. I think the project will probably come in around 12 or 13 million bucks when it's all said and done. But I think, uh, and the, the training facility to get the equipments is probably going to tack on some more money. Uh, I don't have a problem with the location, back in the early 90s, I built a fire hall myself, I was part of a crew. That built one in Brockville, and at the time, the community, you know, said it was the worst thing ever, and. It ended up being perfectly fine, I think the location is fine. I'm perfectly fine with it, uh, the money is going to be more than we anticipate, but I think Counselor Gardner. Uh, pretty much summed up my feeling is that if you don't do this, then what are you going to do? If we do nothing, we leave the northern part of the city. Without really that effective, as, as effective fire service as we would like to have. So because I think it's incumbent upon us as council. To provide service to that part of the city and current, or better service to that part of the city. I'm going to support it and not really fussy about how the numbers are shaking out. But I think we have to move forward, because I don't. But I think we have to move forward because I don't think any of the alternatives that have been kicked around are better than this one. Just my humble estimation. Thank you, Your Worship.
Counselor Towndale and then Counselor McDonald. Counselor Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I was saving my comments for the debate. I think some of my concerns were raised by my colleagues in the earlier discussion. Looking at the recommendations, I would be prepared to move A through C. It's D that I have a problem with and in part because of the reasons mentioned by Counselor Bergeron in regards to the training center. I too felt that it was a part of this new station, especially considering there is a current training facility on Saunders that is about to be overtaken by a subdivision, more or less. But I think that, you know, with the closure of the OFC, there's an opportunity here, but one thing I'm concerned about, we approved this without the training center added on, it gets kicked down the road. And future councils keep putting it off, so it doesn't happen. So we have an area that's set up but never completed. And I'm not trying to be negative, but it's a possibility. And it ties into my second point, which is the cost. Because of COVID and other things, you know, we saw construction inflation prior to COVID hitting. We, we were made well aware of it and now it's even more serious. In hearing from the consultants that steel is now twice the price, I have serious concerns with that because that's, that's something we can't lock down. Do we need new station? Absolutely. Do we need coverage in the north end of town? Absolutely. There's no question. We need a new station. However, we might need to hit pause on this and part of it is the budgetary consideration. I don't think we're ready to issue the RFP in that respect. I think we should continue working on the design of the final project, no question. Let's look at the training center in terms of costing it out and seeing what that would look like. I do agree with Counselor Hollingsworth that the contingency here is a little bit too low. And I understand the disclaimer and it's hard to pinpoint what COVID will cost, et cetera. However, that's where my concern is because if we approve it, go to tender correction, RFP, and then we're in the process of running the project and the costs start to really get out from under us, we're stuck. We, we've started the project. So this is the kind of thing we need to do, but I think if we wait a year, it's not going to necessarily have a super negative effect. So I'm not prepared to move with option D right now. So as a result, I have to vote against this motion. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald and then Counselor Grant.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to suggest that we break down the recommendation into four separate recommendations and vote on them singly. And I think that having heard Counselor Towndale discuss positive reaction to A, B, and C, and D, perhaps my colleagues will agree that we should break this up into four, four recommendations.
Madam Clerk? Is that possible if the two, if the mover and second or agree?
It is possible, Madam Mayor.
So that was moved by Counselor Dupell and seconded by Counselor Eba. What say you, Counselor Dupell?
I will entertain voting on them separately, for sure.
Counselor Eba?
I have no problem.
Madam Clerk, back to you.
Well, the first one that would be voted on, Madam Mayor, would be to receive the presentation provided by J L Richards and Associates Limited.
So we're prepared to go one at a time and then I will ask for debate. So if any of you have not yet spoken, you can do so because I know the Counselor Grant did also want to speak. So I'm not sure where you'd like to speak, Counselor Grant, but we will, I'll watch for indication from you when you want to speak. So the first one is to receive the report. Are we going to have that moved by the same folks, Counselor Dupell and Counselor Eba? Okay. All in favor of receiving the report? Carried? Thank you. Second item, Madam Clerk?
The second item is to approve in principle of the architectural design of the new fire station.
Again, moved by Counselor Dupell, seconded by Counselor Eba. Discussion on that one? All in favor? And against? Carried? Madam Clerk?
Is the, to authorize administration to continue into the design phase of the project, developing the final draft designs for the new fire station.
Moved by Counselor Dupell, seconded by Counselor Eba. Discussion here? All in favor? And against? Carried.
And our fourth recommendation is to authorize administration in conjunction with J L R to prepare and issue an RFP for the construction of the new fire station.
Moved by Counselor Dupell, seconded by Counselor Eba. We might want to resume debate here. I'll go back to Counselor McDonald. Did you want to make any comments? And then I have Counselor Grant.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to, like to ask some questions, actually. In the province of Ontario, how does a fire training center get established? Is that by provincial decree or is it simply by a municipal fire station constituting itself as a training center?
Chief Weber?
Through you, Madam Mayor. To the Counselor, Counselor McDonald, a very good question. It is not by provincial decree and it's not by us just saying we're going to do it. We actually create a agreement with the province that is approved by council. That agreement is a very kind of controlled document that the province issues. And it is signed by the clerk or it's approved by council, signed by the clerk and the, and the mayor to become a partnership. That partnership then depicts how you're going to, that the province provides the instructors. The province continues to train instructors or can train instructors at the department or at the regional training center. It depicts the curriculum that will be used, which is a provincial curriculum and and a few other amenities that the province will provide as part of that. And it, it determines by your, your ability, you determine your ability by your training facility that you've got available. Currently, we would not be able to provide live fire training as we don't have a live fire training facility. However, in the future, as we develop that and provide for that, we can add to that, add, or add that to our list of programs that we can develop and start to deliver in conjunction with the province and their instructors.
Thank you. And then if I can ask a follow-up question, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
There's been a great deal of interest around the table in, for economic reasons, obviously, for gain in us establishing ourselves as a fire training center. Just what is the financial advantage? Is, is it really a significant factor?
Chief Weber?
Except in our heads.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Of course, we want to encourage and certainly the province would like to encourage providers to be cost-effective for people attending the our regional training center. However, they understand that they, that we cannot be cost-negative or cost-neutral and continue to survive. So, you know, each location works with the province to determine the cost for their courses that they're providing. And they apply those costs to the attendees. Obviously, there is some need to remain competitive with other providers of regional training centers. The closest regional training centers to us currently are Clarence Rockland and Lindhurst. And the next closest, the next closest is Kingston. Unfortunately, we will compete with them, but they are an hour's distance away from us or greater, an hour and a half to, or an hour to an hour and a half. The province seemed accepting in my conversations with the province in regards to establishing a regional training center here, that it would be appropriate, considering the distances to other training facilities.
Okay, and then just, just a third quick question. Would all the training have to be done onsite or would there be a possibility of us joining with getting assistance from St. Lawrence College and delivering some of the content of the training?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Again, that would have to be explored in the future and the ability for the province and the community college to work together as well. Certainly, you know, the methodology of involving the surrounding departments, we could take training to other locations and run it through our regional training center locally, like to North Clangary or South Clangary and provide them training on site, if that's the need. Our advantage here would be an ability to do training on a more kind of scheduled need for ourselves, as well as a scheduled need for the surrounding volunteer departments that may not be able to meet or go to college courses during work hours and may be looking for alternative delivery methodology. And if we have a market that can manage or, or would like to manage in that methodology, then we can try to hit that target alongside with other training resources.
Thank you, Chief Weber. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Grant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got four points here. I, we definitely need a new fire hall and, and so I'll support the, that, and 90% of the firefighters at the public consultation meeting picked this location, so they, they know best. They, also I support the CEO's explanation about the training center and putting a business plan together, et cetera, and and, and hopefully, as Orlando and Sebastian said, we can get, try and get some funding from different locations. So all in all, I support the, the recommendation or the motion at this time and let's get moving on it.
Any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to vote in favor of this motion, this motion, but I, I want to say why and I, I heard the, the, the comments from Counselor Bergeron, Counselor Towndale about the costs and the skyrocketing costs, the unknown costs. What is known is that the costs rise every year. And if we put this off one more year to see what the costs are going to be, well, guess what? The costs are going to be more. So as unknown as it is, I would think it's a safer bet to move ahead with this now. Because if steel doubles this year and it doubles again next year, what kind of a conversation are we going to have then? So I'm going to support the motion.
Counselor Mann?
I'm in favor too. Location, great. The cost is, Counselor Bennett just mentioned, it's not going to go down. It's going to increase. The training center component, fine. It was discussed. Some of us thought it could be part of it. But that's going to add another two or three million to project, plus our friends from J L Richards, we have to go back, redesign it. Put it, be putting this off for another year. Back to the idea of where the site is, it's, you know, the volunteer fire department in St. Andrews would respond faster to a fire, name or supporters than our downtown fire department could. So it's definitely needed. Let's move on with it, get the ball rolling.
Counselor Eba and then Counselor Garden?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just thought I'd throw my two cents. I too will support the motion. I think we've had a former counselor who used to talk about nice to haves and need to haves and I'm one who always supports nice to haves because nice to haves obviously increase our quality of life, but this is without a doubt a need to have. This is beyond quality of life. This is life. And, and this is an amazing looking facility that I believe our department deserves. I think quite a few of us have had the opportunity to see the current fire hall and this is way long overdue and I'm thrilled to see the gender neutral washrooms. Also happy to hear that we now have for women who are on staff. I think that was what was mentioned at presentation last week. And the trend is only going to continue. So happy to see that we're accommodating all genders. And, and you know, the, the comment about resort, I mean, you know, the, the little bit of green space isn't going to hurt anyone. If anything, it's going to increase the quality of life for those working at the facility, right? And, and this is just what is needed. So yes, of course, we're disappointed in, in seeing the cost increase, but like it was mentioned, the more we wait, the more expensive it's going to get. And so we might as well bite the bullet now rather than push it along down the road and just spend more money. So I am very much in favor of this.
Counselor Gardner?
Question for Mr. or Chief Weaver. The location, will the response time to Riverdale, I know the, the north end needs it, but will the Riverdale area that is, it's expanding, North Riverdale, Saunders Drive, there's more building going on there. Will the response time be quicker at the location that we want to build that fire station?
Chief Weber?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Gardner. I haven't looked at the science surrounding that direction. It would make sense that traveling down Tollgate towards Power Dam and taking Power Dam back to the back side of, of that neighborhood and/or traveling straight down Brookdale may increase or may decrease the, the time that it takes to get to the Riverdale neighborhoods. But I'm, without having those numbers, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay. Could, could you get that information for me, please, or for counsel, please? It'd be interesting to see if it increases the, the response time to the west end and the north end.
Through you. Chief Weber said, has already said he would do that, Counselor Gardner. Counselor Mack has made that same request and it's, it's a good one. Thank you. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Your Worship. If you look on page 96, the last time the city of Cornwall made any significant change to our fire service was 1989. That's about, what, 31 years if I'm not mistaken? I think most of us would agree, our city has changed in 30 some years. The longer we wait, the longer we leave parts of the municipality with a lesser service. And even though, I'll be quite candid, the numbers are not working for me. That's the truth. I really don't want to delay any further because I think we need A, to bring our building up to speed based on contemporary expectations. And I think we need to provide the northern part of the city a, a service that kind of meets more what is considered standard. So it's not perfect. Many times we've done these things and they're not perfect, but I don't feel like waiting any longer. I'm going to support the motion. Thank you, Your Worship.
Got a recorded vote, Madam Mayor?
Yes, and I'm going to let Counselor Dupell wrap up. I will make a few comments before. I will be supporting, oh. Counselor Bergeron, you've already spoken. You want to spoke, speak a second time?
Not spoken on this motion, but I, I did have my hand up earlier.
Go ahead, go ahead, Counselor Bergeron.
Well, I, I'd like, if I may, to ask the chief if he agrees with the statement that the professional firefighters believe this to be the appropriate location for this fire hall, because I, I don't understand that to be the case.
Chief Weber?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Can I ask Counselor Bergeron to clarify your statement, please?
Is that okay, Counselor Bergeron? Can you go back to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you understand that the professional firefighters support this location as was stated?
So through you, Madam Mayor. I'm not, I don't know if the firefighters association support the actual location or not. I don't believe they do that. However, we have the reports that provide that direction.
Thank you. I mean, we have an email from them stating that they don't. Just want to be very clear that from my understanding, they do not believe this to be the correct location. That is not the debate we're having, but it was a point of order to clarify. Again, I remain opposed to the location. I remain opposed to the budget as it is and, and pushing an RFP forward right now. I certainly can appreciate the comments from counsel that we need to move forward with this. But we were expecting a training center and I think that needs to be included before an RFP goes out. I don't think we're talking about months and months of time here and to get it right, I think is more important than, than continuing to push it forward. So I will vote, of course, against this.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam CFO? Thank you. To some of those points made by council around pressing pause and delaying. Can you comment on how that will impact the budget of this particular project? And also a question about a reserve for this kind of project?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I probably will leave your first question to the CAO to comment on.
Okay.
As far as the budget for the fire station. With the amount spent to date or committed to date. Plus the estimated construction for the facility, it is around twelve million dollars. Of which, just to remind council, the city plans to borrow a percentage of that. But the balance is funded through the development charges reserve. Because it is also to support new growth in that area. So about ten point six million would be, at these dollars would be borrowed. And about one point four million would come from the development charges reserve. There isn't another reserve for capital for the fire department at this time.
Thank you for that information. Much appreciated. Madam CAO?
So Madam Mayor, your question was about hitting pause on the project or deferring, moving forward with the project?
Correct.
I think with any projects we have seen. Delay by, you know, as much as six months or twelve months has often resulted in additional costs. We've seen higher inflation in the construction. Index with all of our infrastructure projects, I would say over the last, I want to say for at least the last three years. So I, my comment would be just that a delay might result in a higher cost.
Thank you, Madam CAO and Madam CFO for that. I will support this motion. I have been on council a long time and was here for. The wastewater treatment plant and the Benson Center. And of course, waiting just pushes up the cost. We know that. So it's a part of the issue. I do agree with council's comments that this is a piece of infrastructure that speaks to growth. That speaks to different parts of our community getting access to safety. And care for their families and where they live. So it is very important infrastructure. This council does want a training facility. I think that that's clear. I think that administration is hearing that, consultants are hearing that. So that needs to continue to be part of the conversation going forward. And to Counselor Mack and Counselor Gardner's points. This is a big cost for our community. And so we need to hear about exactly why this infrastructure is necessary for the safety of our community. So Chief Weaver, I heard you say a couple of times that you would come back to us with response times. To show to the community exactly what safety we're talking about. And how this is going to benefit our community. The community needs to keep hearing that from us as we continue to move forward with this expensive but necessary project. To Counselor Hollingsworth's point, nineteen eighty-nine. The clock ticks and it ticks and then it's talk and it's time to move forward. So here we are. We've had these conversations before. But again, Chief Weaver, you need to come back to us, to the community, to explain exactly how this facility is going to work. For the people of Cornwall and of course, for the firefighters that it will house. So we'll look forward to hearing from you. Counselor Dupell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I was not opposed to separating all of the motions from the motion that I made. Because I always enjoy a healthy debate and allow council to. Or appreciate council's feedback on every motion. But I think the result will be the same, that we could have approved it all in one motion. But it's always great to hear from people. And my colleagues have answered most of the questions that weren't answered. So thank you to my colleagues. But before I end, I just want to also publicly welcome Mr. Stevenson to his new post. So welcome aboard, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Counselor Dupell.
No problem.
Madam Clerk, I believe Counselor Gardner requested a recorded vote.
Yes, I'm ready to go if you are, Madam Mayor.
Yes, please go ahead.
Counselors Claude Magnetage?
In favor.
Eric Bajaron?
Opposed.
Big Gardner?
In favor.
Dean Hollingsworth?
In favor.
Carolina Ba?
In favor.
Counselors Maurice Dupin? Glenn Grant?
Favor.
Todd Bennett?
In favor.
Justin Towne?
No.
Elaine McDonald?
In favor.
Madam Mayor?
In favor.
So nine in favor, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chief Weaver, do you want to introduce a deputy chief to our television audience?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce Matthew Stevenson to our TV audience. And as well as to the community of Cornwall. Matthew comes to us with an extensive background in public service. As well as volunteer firefighting service. So Matthew is, his past has taken him down a different road in the municipality. In the planning and building wing of the community. So he brings a wealth of knowledge to our community in regards to that. And certainly brings a very well-seated experience in the fire service. As a twenty, I'm going to say twenty-five-year veteran and he's going to nod and go, yes, you're right. Twenty-five-year veteran of the fire service in Strathroyd Cardig, which is west of London. As well as he started out as a firefighter and went through the ranks and became a district deputy fire chief there. As well for Mount Bridges Station, I believe. And he'll nod again if I'm correct. So welcome, Matthew. I appreciate, certainly appreciate, Matthew's been here a little over a month and a half already. And has certainly been very welcomed by our staff and by our department.
Deputy Chief Stevenson, a few words.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. It is an absolute privilege and honor to be here tonight. And to be welcomed by the city of Cornwall. The last month or so has certainly been overwhelming. And just a true testament to your city, Madam Mayor and members of council. On just the open arms and the welcoming that I've received personally. And I am so excited to be here, so excited to serve the residents and so excited to be part of this city. So thank you very much.
Beautiful words. Thank you, Deputy Chief. We're very happy to have you. And yes, people are friendly. You will be well received here and we are proud that you've chosen to come to our community. Thank you very much. Thank you for being on screen this entire time too. Got a good sense there. Of who you are. So welcome. Thank you. Thank you to the consultants, Monsieur Racine, Mr. Baron. And I think Mr. Carrier has been there the entire time and Chief Weaver for your presentation this evening. Merci. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, counselors.
Madam Clerk?
So we're going to go back to our consent reports, Madam Mayor, and we have several proclamations. Recommending the following. That council proclaimed Tuesday, June first, twenty twenty-one as intergenerational date in the city of Cornwall. The month of June, twenty twenty-one as post-traumatic stress disorder awareness month. The month of June, twenty twenty-one as National Indigenous History Month. Sunday, June sixth, twenty twenty-one as Shriners International Awareness Day. And that council approved the flag to be flown at three forty Pitt Street. The month of June, twenty twenty-one as seniors month in the city of Cornwall. The month of June as ALS Awareness Month. The month of June as Pride Month in the city of Cornwall. And also to approve the flag raising at the, at three forty Pitt Street. Ontario Regulation two eighty-four oh nine, budget matter expenses. The recommendation, yeah, the recommendation is that council receive this report as required by the municipal act. Two thousand and one, Ontario Regulation two eighty-four oh nine.
Moved by Counselor Dupell and seconded by Counselor Bennett. Any discussion?
Oh, no, sorry, Madam Mayor. Just I was, had a hard time logging on at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, sorry.
I wanted to move the tax write-offs to communications.
Oh, is there still time to do that, Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, item nine and.
Have already been removed?
They have been.
There you go, Counselor Dupell. So for the items that remained, can I just ask again for a move, Counselor Dupell and Counselor Grant? Any discussion on those items? I just want to highlight to council and to the people of Cornwall that June is a big month in terms of proclamations. Please take some time to take note of all the things that are going on. To support the charities that continue to do hard work at a very difficult time. I thank Mr. Bernard La Matche from the senior friendly community for having intergenerational day be proclaimed next Tuesday, June first. His project and his committee are certainly working on seniors issues and intergenerational issues as well. With their project for the waterfront and it's seniors month, it's pride month, it's National Indigenous History Month. So there are a lot of things going on. So eyes open, pay attention and support. All in favor? Pass. Carried. Madam Clerk?
So under unfinished business reports, we have Gateon Park Urban Campground. With the recommendation that council receive this report. And B, should council wish to advance the proposal of developing a campground in Gateon Park to the next step? Provide direction to administration to include a capital project in the twenty twenty-two municipal budget submission. To commission a feasibility study, complete with preliminary designs, a class C construction estimate. Public consultation, market analysis and economic development impact assessment.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to Madam CAO for introductory comments and then she may want to turn it over to Mr. Fawcett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this has been an item that's resulted from a new business motion brought forward by. Council previously. I believe in our recreation master plan, there was discussion always about the potential to have a campground. And I believe that the intention is to take a look at the subject matter now. With the plans of potentially starting to financially plan for it in the upcoming budget years. The report is pretty thorough. We do have staff on board to respond to questions. And so with that, I think I'd like to hand it over to recreation.
Mr. Fawcett, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. We have prepared this report in consultation with some other neighboring municipalities. Who have operated campgrounds themselves, as well as the Raisin Region Conservation Authority and the Parks of the St. Lawrence. To look at potential operation models and their experiences and then to align an operating budget. That seems to make sense with some of the costs that they've historically experienced while operating their campgrounds. I'd like to thank the staff at those agencies for their assistance in putting this report together. They've been extremely helpful. And so a big thank you goes out to each one of those. I won't list them by name as I'm worried I'll miss one or two, but anyway, but thank you very much. You know who you are.
All right. So we'll take a list of questions, comments. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion, actually, if that's okay.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we receive this report and that we send it to the newly formed waterfront working group to study and make recommendations on how to proceed.
Is there a second or for that motion? Counselor Gardner? Madam Clerk, do you have the motion? Just want to make sure. Counselor Bennett?
I do have the motion, Madam Mayor, but do we have a waterfront working group?
We will shortly.
Oh, okay.
Yes, because I've made a request for interest. And so there have been, there have been counselors that have submitted their interest. And now it's a question of just determining who's going to sit on that committee, on the working group.
Okay, so the motion is to refer this matter to the upcoming waterfront group.
Waterfront working group.
Working group?
Yes. So I'm going to, so you have the motion clearly. Does everybody have the motion? Do you want to reread that, Madam Clerk, before I start a list?
We have our mover and seconder and the motion is to refer this matter to the waterfront working group.
Yep. Counselor Bennett?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Jamie. This was a really thorough report. It's exactly what I was hoping to see. The only disappointment I have in it, if I have to be honest, is the cost. And which is why I decided that I was going to make the motion I just made. Mostly because we are in COVID times right now and to throw a five million dollar budget, the taxpayers right now would be, in my opinion, irresponsible. I do believe that this is the proper use for this portion of Gateon Park. I do believe it would attract a lot of people to come to our city. I think the spin-off benefits are amazing and the opportunity is amazing to move forward on this project. A couple of things I did notice, note in the report is that of all the organizations you reached out to, I don't believe, and I don't think I missed it. Is that there's nobody that actually operates a winter outdoor camping program. So I mean, that's one, another reason why I kind of wanted to push this towards a working group is to get that kind of information to see if that's something that would work for us. Cross-country skiing is big in that park and I thought, you know, this would be a great compliment to that. But also this report, the way it was done, and I can't compliment you enough on it. But it does state things like a beach and improvements for that. And that's also in the waterfront plan that it came out. And so rather than just ram the whole thing down somebody's throat here, I don't want to do that. I want to do it properly. So I think if we were to recommend this to the waterfront working group, they can say, you know, yes to this or no to that. Or this would work and this will work. But we could really go over the information that you were able to provide us and really do, I think, what's right for that park. Because that's a beautiful park and I certainly don't want to do anything to take away from that. I think this is something that's going to enhance it and really put some eyes on the city of Cornwall in another way. So thank you for that and I hope my colleagues agree to send this on for further study. Thank you.
I have Counselor Grant and Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there were two parts to the motion and the clerk only read out one. One is to receive the information as well, if I'm not, is that correct, the mover?
Yeah, let me check with the clerk, Madam Clerk.
Yes, I can certainly add that to motion.
Is that okay, Counselor Bennett? Yep. Counselor Grant?
Thank you. I'll support the motion. I think the information was there as. As Counselor Bennett said, the cost kind of got my eyes bouncing a bit. But I think if we look at the components of it, there's a way of going and. And I think that's a good resolution to put to a working group. So I'll support the motion.
Counselor McDonald and then Counselor Bergeron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I support the motion too because I understand that this motion is an alternative. To part B of the recommendation, which I could not support. I have very grave doubts about the viability of. A campground being established here, although mention of a winter campsite for cross-country skiers and that sort of thing. Is a possibility and I fully support a closer examination of. is a possibility and I fully support a closer examination of all the components that could could happen here.
Thank you. Councillor Bergeron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the motion. I think it's a really good compromise on councillor Bennett's behalf in terms of what was presented to us and how to deal with it. I've seen the you know, working groups and how effective they can be in taking something and maybe you know, coming up with an alternative plan that might be a little more feasible. So certainly support it. I love the idea. I love the idea of ideas like this. And so we'll we'll support it. I I wish the working group luck. I'd love to see it come back. Maybe with without the beach included because that already was part of the waterfront plan as I understood it. Just to keep those costs where I think it would be more more feasible. So thanks for the motion. I will support it.
Councillor Gardner.
Yeah, I seconded the motion because I I totally agree with getting more information. As much as the report that we have on hand was very clear and concise and had a lot of of data that I wanted to see, I also want to break that down. If we can have a working group, break it down by issues so we can put in there what will work and what won't work. So I I agree with with councillor Bennett's motion.
Councillor Mack.
I just need some clarification from perhaps Jamie. Where is the proposed site? I'm having trouble with. I tried to look at the map and the print was small. Are we talking about the east side of of the main entrance?
Mr Fother.
Heading west, first entry.
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. It's the west side of Floral Drive. So Floral Drive intersects with Vincent Massey Drive right across from Richmond Road. So the the vacant with what's used now is a picnic area.
And we're going to use that for a campsite.
That that's the area I've identified in the.
So we promote green space, growing trees, keeping trees, and we're going to put a campsite in the middle of the beautiful green space. And that's been interesting. The one thing we don't need is a summer campsite. I went on the St Lawrence Park Commission website booking site, pretend I was going to book a campsite. Interesting. All their cabins, well, thirty of them booked solid. All the trailer sites book solid. Lots of campsites available. That's in fact, they put the note rate in at the bottom of the page. Plenty of campsites available. People want to be near water when they go to a campsite. You talk about you have to have a beach area, swim area. I I just can't believe that we would consider putting a campsite in that green space. I thought maybe some of the more environmentally more environmentalist than I am would be, you know, say, wait a minute, but apparently not. They're quite they would not oppose, at least they have a voice day opposition, to tear up all that green space, put in gravel roads and sewer lines and water lines, re redoing the washrooms to get up showers in there, which is one of the big things. I'd be very disappointed if a waterfront group said, hey, that's a great spot for a campsite. So tear up all that green spot, kick the people out of their picnics there and tear down a few more trees. Anyway, that's the way they want to go. Fine. And by the way, when it comes to revenue and profit, there's there are two different things. Jamie, can you name one thing the city makes a profit on, a good profit that they run, that we run?
Mr Fother was smiling.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I can't speak for other departments, but I know in recreation, no, it's a it's a it's a service we provided at a cost, at a cost.
By the way, campers go to campsites to get away from the city. They don't go to a campsite so they go visit the city. I speak from experience. Okay, take enough.
Any other comments from council? I just have a a couple of questions, Mr Fother. To councillor Max's point about campgrounds not being booked, but other types of camping being fully booked cabin type. Is that a trend that that this project contemplates?
Yes, that is in fact exactly what particularly the Parks of the St Lawrence have advised is that they are they've got some cabins, I believe a tree house as well, that is, it's most sought after. Then there's there's the seasonal campsites where with from trailers, it's it's the 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 same resident or client is there for for the summer season. Again, those are are popular. It's the conventional tent camping sites are are what is sort of least popular and most available.
And this project contemplates a diversity of amenities, right?
The 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 new business motion was specific to say to call for a mix of serviced RV sites as well as tent sites and then as well as the some yurts, which again, it's we the report we've provided provides a few options and that we've seen some trends with pods or types of small cabins or or yurts as well are certainly all increasing in popularity.
Okay. Well, I can, I'll I'll go to you in a minute, councillor Dupell. I I certainly am going to support further discussion. I think this is a a good motion, councillor Bennett, in the way that that we'll put it to the working group. I imagine that the working group will be able to do some community engagement as well, Mr Fother. Is that a possibility for the working group?
I would I would say so. I mean, I suppose it's whatever was asked or tasked of the working group, I'm sure can be done.
Because to councillor Max's point, you know, I've spent more time in Park Gando in the last year than I have over the last many years. And I know that people do enjoy being there just in terms of the trails and the activities. I remember running into you there, Mr Fother on one one sunny crisp afternoon. So I know that people will pay attention to what happens there and will want to hear from this working group and will want to hear about, you know, the discussions that are taking place. So I'm putting that out there to the future working group that community is going to pay very close attention to this and discussion is going to be extremely important. Councillor Dupell.
Madam Mayor, I just want to thank councillor Bennett for the motion. I think it's a great motion. I will support the motion one hundred percent and with all due respect to councillor McIntosh, I think that if you look around the campsites in our area, if you go down the number two or you go up the highway number two, campsites are sold out every weekend for people who are wanting to do a weekend camping. It's different for people who have a seasonal camper. They've already established their spot and they're not the people moving around. But I certainly know for sure that if you inquire with campsite owners that there's even waiting lists for seasonal campers and there's definitely sell out every weekend, especially long weekends. So I would encourage more conversation around this motion and thank you councillor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr Fother, for the report and for all of the partners that you thanked, particularly the Parks of the St Lawrence. I think that's going to be an interesting partnership going forward. They certainly seemed interested in the fact that we were interested in in talking. So I appreciate that. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor and against? Carried. Madam Clerk.
The next report is the J C Goddard Development, Prime Square, with the action recommended. The council approved a site-specific tax increment grant, TIG, for twenty years at ninety percent for the residential development of forty four rental units at one Second Street East as proposed by Mr Goddard. And B, that a bylaw be prepared and presented to council at its regular meeting of council of June fourteenth.
I'm going to turn to Madam CAO for introductory remarks and then I'll go to councillor Gardner. You put your hand up first. I'll go to you first. Madam CAO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this report, the request for information for this site at Pitt and Second Street was brought forward by a new business motion from councillor Gardner. Around that time, the property was in the process of changing hands and was subsequently purchased by Mr J C Goddard. I think Mr Goddard would have, if we were meeting in our traditional council room chambers, I think he would have loved to have participated. But he indicated that he's not as comfortable with Zoom. And so I'm going to, I'm going to try and answer everyone's questions. And if there's anything else, then we'd be happy to get back to you right away. So Mr Goddard has put forward a development proposal, Prime Square, the corner of Pitt and Second Street, would be five stories, forty four units, forty four residential units, and then a small commercial space on the main floor. The units would be relatively small in size and the rents would be affordable based on our housing strategy plan and in speaking with Melissa Morgan and our social housing department. I think that we think strategically bringing forty four doors down to a corner like that and Pitt and Second Street would be an excellent addition to the downtown core. Keep in mind that corner has remained vacant, I think, since about nineteen eighty nine. Without the tax increment grant to support a residential development of this this amount for this size, I think council would be still looking for someone to try and put a development on that corner. It might be something smaller. Mr Goddard indicated that, you know, potentially without that level of a tax increment grant, he might be able to do a two story building. He is building it on the existing foundation at the corner. So I think that the report provides quite a bit of the background on the development. We did share this with our CPEG committee and they've they've reviewed it. They were supportive of the project as well. So I think that if we look at council's strategic priorities, our efforts to try and bring more housing options to our community, I think we can indicate that we feel there's a significant demand for these types of units in this range for rent. And I think it'd be a welcome addition to our downtown core. Also on this evening's agenda that we'll talk about following this report is a plan to have a site-specific CIP program to, I think, try to attract and cater to larger residential developments to meet the demands within our community. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you, Madam CAO. I'll go to councillor Gardner first and then councillor Grant.
I just want to make a motion and move forward with this. At the end of the day, we're not getting any tax revenue from that corner. We'll be receiving a little bit more than what we're getting now. And at the end of the day, it's going to bring traffic to the downtown small businesses, including the ours center. And it's been tried three times before, never worked, let's get it done. So if I can get a second or move the motion, I'll move the motion. Move ahead with the with the project.
Right. Councillor Gardner moves the motion and councillor Abass seconds the motion. Discussion. Councillor Grant, councillor Bergeron, councillor Towndale. Councillor Grant. Councillor Grant.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm I'm very supportive of this this motion and I just want to ensure that this this is for the forty four rental units and nothing less. So this is contingent upon the forty four units.
Madam CAO, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. It's contingent upon forty four rental units. They have to be rental units, so it cannot be converted to condominium and still receive the grant. So certainly forty four units and and the rents as indicated in the report.
Thank you. I I totally agree with the development in downtown area and hopefully we'll get much more development as a result of this. So I support it.
Councillor Bergeron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had pulled that item from consent to talk about as well so that the CAO kind of covered. There may not be a need to to revisit that, but ultimately I'm still, you know, confused as to why we would be developing a policy that's eighty percent for ten years on a sliding scale, identifying this property as one of them and in the same meeting making an exemption or making an exception for for this property. It seems to me that that program, then all of these properties would make the same request. So I I'm a bit confused by the timing of, you know, I would wait until we have that policy passed and then do this. But I still, I wouldn't support what's being requested. And they're two different things. So ninety percent over twenty years to me is just, is just too much. I really support the idea of this project. I love the idea of it. I think it will do infill. It will be great. But the program at eighty percent on ten years on a sliding scale to me, considering there's no development charges, is already enough of a break. And so I would stay with that. I have a feeling the other five properties we've identified will come back and then our our policy will then become kind of irrelevant. So I support the project. I just, this is too much of a request.
Madam CAO, do you want to respond to that?
I thank you, Madam Mayor. So the program that's in place currently will not entice development on these vacant sites. We have not, they've been vacant for many years. So the sites that we have been talking about are the site at Pitt and Second Street, the old Cornwallis site, another site at the corner of Pitt and First. We've also identified a couple of underutilized sites in the Lavalage area. So following the unfortunate far for four eight furniture, that site, I think, will have struggles for development as well as the site at the corner of Belmont, Material Road. And then the city has fairly significant property where fire hall number two is and the parking lot, that's also an underutilized site. So if the sliding scale program would have worked, we would have seen developments on these sites. I think that we need to think about something that's a little bit more strategic. I think that this program, although it is certainly significantly more than what we've offered in the past, the reality is, is that it doesn't require an outlay of funds and capital from the city to try and encourage a housing development on those locations. And I think if the housing is something that meets high demand and is accessible and affordable for the residents or for the people that we're trying to attract to live in Cornwall, we have heard from employers, we're hearing from many that there is just no housing options available for people to come and and rent and stay in Cornwall until, you know, potentially a time where they can build a home. So I think we feel that this is our greatest need. And if we see development on all of those other sites of similar size and scope, then I would say that we have done exactly what we hoped the plan would do is have more infill, generate more vibrancy and activity in these downtown areas. And I think that it would support our businesses downtown. It would be able to access other amenities, whether it's professional offices, medical, transit, all of those services, access to the waterfront makes it all very good sites for these types of developments.
Councillor Bergeron, did you want to respond?
Well, just that I I think we should be passing the policy before what we're doing today. That was that was half of my argument. So I'm all for a policy. I just want to be very consistent with it. And if we're going to be not doing that today, those properties, those other properties that are equally as important, we might as well pass one policy first. We're talking about two weeks, so it's fine. Thank you.
Councillor Towndale and then councillor Dupell and then councillor Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am supportive of this. I mean, it's a little different than what we've done in the past because we're doubling the timeframe. So, you know, it does seem like quite a, I've heard the term too rich used previously. But at the same time, I think we have to look at, you know, this is a long term kind of thing here. This this plot of land, I've seen two other proposals and they were good. They're ambitious, but unfortunately they didn't get going. They couldn't get traction. This plan, my understanding is it's almost shovel ready. You know, this if this funding is approved and everything else falls into place, the trigger will be pulled. And this is the closest, I think, we've seen a development on this property since it's become vacant, aside from the foundation that was constructed. The other side of the coin is we're looking at low cost apartments, at least that's my understanding. One commercial space, I would have liked to see maybe one more on the ground floor, but low cost housing, affordable housing is a big deal. We're building two buildings ourselves and here's a third one within the span. We're building two buildings ourselves and here's a third one within the span of a year or two, unheard of and long overdue. So I look at those benefits. I look at the fact that this property will be generating tax revenue as opposed to empty lot, even if it is reduced for twenty years. I look at putting more people in the downtown core. I look at the fact that utilities, i.e. water will still, water and sewer will still be paid on this property. So, you know, there's no, we don't need to build new infrastructure for it. It's infill. It's hard to argue against it, in my opinion. I think this is a win-win all around. I look forward to debating the other issue outside specific in the next next discussion. But this, to me, is a win-win. And sometimes we need to look at our policies, see if they're working. If they're not, it's time to revise them. We've done it with the CIP program before when we looked at not-for-profit groups, when we looked at outside the priority area. We've had these discussions. This is an extension of that, in my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor Dupell and Counselor Hollingsworth. Counselor Dupell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank Ms. Adams for her comments because I I'm closing in on eleven years on council and and you know what? There's been nothing happening on that corner. So to see this happen, as Counselor Towndale said, you know, we've seen some near misses in the over our term on council and I think that this is this is great for our city. And I welcome the other property owners to come forward and ask for the same thing because I think development in downtown is so needed. So I I welcome this opportunity and I I thank Mr. Goddard for proposing what he has proposed to us.
Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Your Worship. If I look down on the internet, I think King George burned down in nineteen ninety-seven. If I got the internet article correctly, I mean, you can believe everything you read on the internet. But assuming that date's approximate, we're looking at somewhere to the tune of about thirty-some years, give or take the Cornwallis site. I think I was a kid when it got leveled. That's a lifetime ago, or at least it feels like it. The Poirier Furniture Site would be wonderful to see redeveloped. I think, and I can't speak for the small businesses in our down in our in our BIAs, but my guess would be putting a residential component in those neighborhoods is going to help them, you know, do business. People there, they're going to shop, at least I would think. And most of us would agree, at least Pitt and Second is kind of one of the cornerstone corners of our municipality, but the other sites are all equally important. I don't, I mean, we've waited for some of these sites a lifetime and nothing is happening. I agree that the numbers are high. I'm not a real fan of them, but I I think this might be just the way it has to get done. And I think our municipality will benefit in the long term. The other thing that's noteworthy, Your Worship, is we're not pulling money out of a reserve or financing. We're just saying, look, we we just won't take as much tax money as we would in a perfect world. I see it as kind of an investment in our community and and I think that's why I'm prepared to support it. Even though I admit the numbers and the percentages are higher than I would be, I'm kind of comfortable with. I don't want to miss another opportunity to move forward with this corner. Thank you.
Counselor Mack.
February fourteenth, nineteen ninety seventeen. You had it right.
I knew he was gonna.
The internet.
I just looked in the book. Yeah, this is the, as Justin said, win-win situation. You know, it's, I don't know if anybody's ever been to Newark, New Jersey, but it was a town where things burn down and they never build on them. It just stays the way it is. And that's a long time to have a vacant piece of property right smack dab in the middle of your city. Probably more people go buy that spot than anywhere else in town. It's going to bring people downtown. We're we're not, we, the revenue off that property is almost zero, so. It's, you know, it's a it's a plus for the community. And also the fact that Mr. Goddard is putting up, we know it's going to happen. We've seen what he's done up in Second Street West. He's involved in a five-story apartment building now across from his Riverdale Terrace site, which is a big asset to the city. And I guess the understanding is he will start next year. And in two years' time, it's going to be a building sitting on that lot and it's going to be a big plus for the downtown. Great, great.
Any other comments from council? Madam Madam CIO, did you want to add something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so I did speak out of turn. It was nineteen ninety-seven. But I also would like council to know that construction would start to begin on this project in a matter of weeks. So it's not going to be not going to be delayed at all. You'd start to see activity this summer on that corner.
So you've all spoken very eloquently, including Madam CIO. Thank you for your comments. Pitt and Second, I have knocked on a lot of doors, folks. I've had a lot of conversations over my years as a councillor and now mayor. Pitt and Second is a recurring theme. It it speaks to downtown. It speaks to our wherewithal as a community. If something happens there, imagine the inspiration that is going to bring, not only to downtown, but to other developers and to other people in this community. So I am going to be supportive of this. Housing, housing, housing. We have a housing task force. We know this is critical. And we know this is not going away as a critical issue, especially as we focus on growth for our community. So I'm very supportive. All in favor? Counselor Gardner, we're voting. What did you?
For the motion, I'd like to make a last comment.
Absolutely. You go ahead, Counselor Gardner.
I agree with Counselor Towndale that we have policies in place sometimes that are there to direct us. But there are times when those policies are choking us and we need to make changes. So you're right, Counselor Towndale, we need to make the change this time and get this done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Gardner. All in favor of the motion? Against? Carried. Madam Clerk?
We have our unfinished business listing recommending that we receive, that council receive the unfinished business listing for May twenty-fifth.
Moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Grant. All in favor? Against? Carried.
Our next item is the tax write-offs adjustments with a recommendation that council receive the report for tax write-offs and adjustments under section three fifty-seven of the Municipal Act two thousand and one and tax refunds from decisions made by the Assessment Review Board.
Moved by Counselor Towndale, seconded by Counselor Bennett. Discussion. Counselor Towndale, Counselor Dupell, Counselor Bergeron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I pulled it into consent because I had a couple of questions going through it. The first one that caught my eye because the list, the properties, there was a list of denied. Just trying to make sure I have it in front of me and I apologize. It looked like, and this is what got me confused, McConnell Manor appears to have submitted a claim that their property is damaged, unusable. Is that correct?
Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. The four properties that we denied the application attempted to put a application through a three fifty-seven. And a three fifty-seven is where a municipality can count, cancel, reduce or refund taxes if the property is damaged and normally damaged where it's now unusable because it was raised by fire or demolition, et cetera. These four applications were received because the facilities, the buildings, were temporarily closed due to COVID. They were temporarily closed for part of the tax year due to public health orders. And so a number of municipalities have received received applications through fifty, three fifty-seven because of this. And so we asked MFOA for their opinion. MFOA went to the province and they said that they do not qualify under three fifty-seven of the Municipal Act. So those applications have since been denied.
Counselor Towndale, follow up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Okay, I find that interesting. I won't get into long-term care homes because I was in charge of one of the ones in Peel region when I was deployed last year, so I'll withhold my comments on that. But I did notice there was another address under minutes of settlement. The first one is Marlowe, but there's no number. Can I get some clarification on that, please?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, I don't know the address on Marlowe. I would have to get back to council on that. I I could possibly send an email later this week on the address.
Counselor Towndale?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, that'd be that'd be fine. I'm just curious to know what it is, since it wasn't specified. And then my last question through you, Madam Mayor. Are any of these, I know it's minutes of, from the Assessment Review Board. So are any of these in relation to MPAC appeals?
So all of the minutes of settlement would be from appeals of MPAC assessed values. And I do have some detail on a couple of the larger ones like Home Depot on your second page of our list. And basically, there was an overstated amount for the Garden Center and so a reduction of gross leasable space or area. So yes, all of these would have went through MPAC and a review through the ARB.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Counselor Dupell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to Ms. Bailey. I just wanted to get some clarification from some emails I received recently. So what qualifies someone for a tax write-off or an adjustment?
So there is an opportunity for any property owner to, whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial, to request through MPAC, so not through the city, because we do not, we do not assess values for property for a request for reconsideration. So once that form is filled in, the MPAC will then go and assess the home and there will be a determination. For certain properties, they can skip that process and go right to the Assessment Review Board or put an appeal in through that process. So it isn't with the city. It's specifically through MPAC.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Ms. Bailey. How often can this be done or how continuous can it be done?
It can be done at at any time and there is a deadline. So if you miss that deadline, it's it's for the the current year. But if you meet that deadline, it it could be for the previous year. And normally what we have seen is that there may be an increase at the beginning of a four-year phase-in when a property owner gets their new assessed value from MPAC. But because we are in, I guess, now the second year of a continuation of the four-year phase-in, so we should have had one in twenty twenty. We didn't. We haven't had one in twenty twenty-one now because of of the pandemic. The municipality is not receiving many notices that property owners are are appealing their their assessed value.
Madam Mayor, to Ms. Bailey, how long can they do it for? How long can they request the adjustment or the tax write-off?
It it's for the years before them. So if you would file one in the first year of your four-year phase-in, let's say that's for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. I guess it would have been, I'm sorry, for the last four-year phase-in, it would have been seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. And you filed in two thousand and seventeen. Whatever decision happened, the tax rule would be corrected for those four years going forward. So once a decision is made, there may be a refund if you've already paid taxes, but then your assessed value would change in those subsequent years.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Ms. Bailey. So after that four-year period, what happens?
A property owner at any time can set, can request a request for reconsideration. So if they've gotten their new assessed bill, they can provide an application through MPAC to to take a look at that value.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor? Against? Carried. Madam Clerk?
Our next report is the site-specific CIP program incentive for vacant sites and residential developments. Recommendation is that council approve a site-specific program within the city's Community Improvement Plan that would support housing projects as outlined in this report and prepare a bylaw to be presented to council at the next regular meeting.
Moved by Counselor Grant, seconded by Counselor McDonald. Discussion. Counselor Bergeron.
Thank you. I won't say too much. We we covered it. Ultimately, I just think this should have been done first before we we just passed the motion we did. So the order of this meeting did not go the way I had anticipated at the beginning. All good. That's on me.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Gardner and then Counselor Eberst.
I got a nervous finger here. It keeps hitting the wrong spot.
It's okay.
Listen, I have to say that I was really glad to see the issue come forward, the site-specific CIP program for vacant sites. You know, I've I've had a bee in my bonnet for a while and I'm glad to see this happening. And for residential development, it speaks to the downtown intensification. And you people are probably tired of me saying that, using that word. The development of these vacant sites will bring in tax revenues to the city while helping to achieve economic regeneration and sustainability, and that was in the report of the downtown core, including much-needed traffic to small businesses. And that's all I have to say. And thank you for putting that in there, Mr. Boaloo. I've been waiting for that for a while. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for your indulgence.
Counselor Eberst.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I was really happy to see this on the agenda, regardless of the order. We're getting things done in a creative manner. This is a crisis. Housing is a crisis, not only in our community, it's it's everywhere. But unfortunately, in the sector that I work in, I I see it every day. Every meeting I'm in, we talk about this. It relates to people's mental well-being, quality of life, everything, housing relates to everything, ability to find employment, ability to care for for themselves and their families. So I'm so glad to see this as one of the pieces that the community is doing to address the the housing crisis. We're making peanuts off these properties right now. And what's proposed will show a a small increase in what we're receiving in in taxes, yet filling an empty space, filling a need in our community. So I'm hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent in favor of this. I just have one question, something that actually came up in a meeting earlier today when we were talking about the crisis and this potentially being approved tonight. Someone mentioned that some communities have seen an issue where these properties eventually become short-term rentals, Airbnbs, that kind of stuff. I'm wondering if there's anything in this that would ensure that that wouldn't happen in this case because I think there's quite a bit of profit that can be made in those kinds of rentals to ensure these are long-term, affordable rentals for our residents.
Mr. Boaloo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the way that they're getting set up is really to allow for reasonably long-term residency. You know, they're affordable, et cetera. On the subject of Airbnb and that sort of thing, it's it's a conversation that's happening in the planning world to some extent because it, you know, it's it becomes a bit of a question of zoning, whether your zoning bylaw speaks to Airbnb Airbnb allowances or not. So I don't believe at this time that we do. We are rewriting the zoning bylaw at this time and could speak to that, not just for these. We are rewriting the zoning bylaw at this time and could speak to that, not just for these properties, of course, but for various residential properties. It's, it's a conversation, as I said, that is occurring not just in Cornwall, but in all of Ontario and, and beyond.
Okay, thank you. I'm not opposed to Airbnbs. Airbnbs will, you know, likely bring in more traffic to our community. I'm a fan of Airbnbs when I travel as well, but we think the purpose of, of these kinds of units is, is not the, the tourist attraction and more so filling the need for our own residents. So just something to keep in mind.
Counselor Mack?
The southwest corner of Pitt and First, was that a municipal parking lot? It was. And we no longer, the lease ran out. The owner didn't renew the lease. They didn't want to renew it?
Through you, Madam Mayor. That is correct. It's privately owned. The city had a lease on that parking, on that property for this provision of a parking lot. That has come to an end.
Does he plan to build on it?
We have had conversations with the owner about his plans, and I think eventually, absolutely, yes.
And this might encourage it? The owner quicker?
Yeah, we've not had conversations. The selection of the sites that are in this report are really a, a conversation that Ms. Adams and I and some others have had in terms of an appropriate, the appropriate locations. We didn't want to go directly to the owners until we came to council to talk about locations. It could be that some of these owners would choose to not develop, although I think the program is, is a, is a good one and will, they'll be happy with. And certainly will be the incentive that if they wanted to develop, now's the time, so.
Through, to Tracy. Would this help with financing?
Ms. Bailey?
If, if you went to the private sector?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, I, I don't understand the question.
If I was going to go to somebody, I had to borrow the money, and I said, look, I got this deal with the city. Would it be easier, can you think, that somebody?
Absolutely, because it, it plays right into their financial, financial wellbe- well-being on the project.
Okay.
Any further comments? I am very pleased to see this type of program being developed. I'm also pleased to hear that CPAG, you know, our hard-working CPAG group that does a lot of work behind the scenes and does a lot of reviewing. I, I'm glad to hear that they reviewed and that they're in agreement. They have a lot of experience around these types of programs. And to Counselor Ebert's point, yes, housing is pretty much the number one issue right now, and the pandemic has highlighted that. Right? Remote work from home, staying at home, staying safe, stay at home orders. What does home mean? How many people have safe homes to do all of that in? So the time is now, and it is very interesting to embark on what I think is going to inspire some very good development in some very key locations in our city. All in favor? And against? Carried. Madam Clerk?
Up next are the bylaws. Bylaws twenty twenty-one, fifty-one to sixty-one inclusive, listed on the agenda, are being presented to council for adoption.
Moved by? Counselor Ebert and Counselor Grant. Any discussions? All in favor? Against? Carried.
And we are the reports, standing, advisory, special, and head-up committees of council, Madam Mayor.
Any reports? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I have two reports to make, and the first one touches on our strategic plan. Specifically, our resolve to be leaders in sustainability and climate change impact. And I'd like to announce that the city, through Ms. Wells' leadership, has responded to an invitation from the David Suzuki Foundation to establish a pollinator garden. The central city garden will be at Point Maling. And signage is on the way. But more importantly, according to our acting landscape manager, Dan Druen, other city facilities have gotten on board and established pollinator gardens as well. And so I encourage residents as well to flood our fields with pollinator gardens. And hopefully, we will bring in some beauty at the same time that we support a healthy environment. And, oh, yes, and, and if you check the city website, there's a mechanism for uploading your pictures, either to Instagram or to the city site. This is a, a competition. We've been challenged. Good. So, and then, of course, my second announcement, I'm sure everybody is well aware that the Be the Link fundraising team has reached, in fact, surpassed its one million dollar goal. So, yes, the fund currently stands at one million and twenty-three thousand and five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and it continues to grow. The committee continues to contact and follow up with potential donors who are considering donating and those who actually intend to donate. So there are more donations and pledges to come. People have been and continue to be most generous. We thank everyone for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald, for that information. Thank you to Ms. Wells as well for supporting some pretty interesting strategic priorities as well. Any other reports? Counselor Dupell?
Madam Mayor, it's not a standing committee, but I just want to do a feel-good moment for Ms. Emma Meldrum, who organized delivering box, garden boxes to the less fortunate in our community. So I had the privilege to do that with my daughters this weekend, and it was a, a great experience. I just want to recognize Ms. Meldrum for going above and beyond and doing the organization of this event that was so well-received by our community.
Thank you, Ms. Meldrum. We, we, we always need to highlight city employees who go above and beyond, as you say, Counselor Dupell. And this was quite the, quite the endeavor, quite the event, at quite a very difficult time for many people. As much as we're happy about a lot of things that are going on, there's also a lot of work that needs to be done. And thank you, Ms. Meldrum, for supporting that. And you, Counselor Dupell, and your daughter. That's great. Any other standing committee reports? Thank you to all those who pick up a copy of Cornwall Living Magazine. You will see our colleagues, Counselor McDonald there and Counselor Ebert pictured there for their great work in terms of fundraising for the Arts Centre and in terms of working with the United Way to help the most vulnerable people in our community, particularly during this pandemic. Thank you to the magazine for featuring our council colleagues. Madam Clerk?
Up next, Madam Mayor, is our confirming bylaw. We are looking for a motion to adopt that bylaw.
Moved by? Counselor Dupell, seconded by Counselor Gardner. All in favor? Madam Clerk?
And we are at adjournment, Madam Mayor.
I want to thank Counselor Gardner for being determined to talk about infill. We're not sick of hearing about that, Counselor Gardner. We're not. Let's keep doing what you're doing. Motion to adjourn? Counselor Ebert and Counselor Bennett, all in favor? Carried. Thank you, everyone. Continue to stay safe. Merci.